Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the afternoon session of the October 6th Board of Supervisors meeting. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Ms. Bomke, here. Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Melday? Ms. Sellers? Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Sterling? Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This afternoon, it's my pleasure to introduce to you the new commander of Quantico Marine Corps Base, Colonel Joseph Murray, who took command, I believe, July the first. Myself, Ms. Sellers, County Administrator, Deputy County Administrator, went up and met with him a couple of weeks ago. Very impressed about his outlook on our community because he's lived here for a while. So, I wanted to invite him to introduce him to the community, but more importantly, have him come forward and say a few words with us. Colonel Murray.
Thank you very much to the board for having me. I am honored to be here. I just would like to say thank you for including me. I feel exceptionally privileged to be in the position that I am currently in as the commander of Quantico Base. And as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, I am very much looking forward to continuing the community involvement. I think that we have great partnerships. We have strategic assets on the base, and Stafford offers a lot of that through the community involvement, through the schooling, through living for many of the people that live on the base. I just look to continue the success that my predecessor has had in working with you. And one of my big pushes is just community involvement. How can we continue to be good stewards to the community and vice versa with joint land user agreements and the things that we've done, successfully done in the past? I just look forward to continuing to work with you, and thank you very much for inviting me today. Have a good day.
Thank you, Colonel Murray. We appreciate you being here, and don't be a stranger. We'd like to have you come back, and we're very interested in your ideas about opening it up to the community. At this time, I would like to present for his monthly presentation to the board, Dr. Bruce Benson, Superintendent of Schools. Welcome, Dr. Benson.
Thank you. Chairman Snellings, Vice Chair Sellers, Members of the Board, Mr. Romanello. I have a number of things I'd like to update you on this afternoon. I'd like to start with, if I could get the computer a minute, please. I'm going to go, whoops, I'm going to go to our main page. If I do home. Hmm. We'll see if it's coming. And I'm in the wrong place because I don't want to highlight the tip of the hotline. There we go. Okay. So, I just, one of the things that the board is looking at in this coming month is a new set of elementary design specifications. And this is the first time that we've done this in some number of years. So, I'm not going to play this video, but on the main page of our website, there's a little video about how these recommendations were developed with input from teachers and administrators and parents. The first school that potentially would be impacted would be the Moncurat rebuild. We're pleased that we had Mr. Thomas participate in the committee, and our architects put together a little video of how that planning went. The full document will be available tomorrow for folks to review, but we wanted to just bring some attention to that. And some acknowledgement of the way that we need to interact with our elementary students is a little bit different perhaps than it was as ten, many as fifteen, years ago, and the amount of services and support that we provide for students that have all kinds of needs is significantly different than it was some number of years ago. So, we're going to revisit that, and we think that potentially here, once the board decides which of these recommendations they want to adopt, that we'll see elements of that included in the Moncurat rebuild. We're also revisiting strategic planning and under about SPS, SCPS, under strategic planning, refocusing our efforts. The board has asked me to revisit where we are headed as a school system. We currently have a strategic plan that goes through 2017. We received an update on our progress last year at about this time, October and November, and we will receive an update this month, going into next month as well. But the board has asked that we kind of take a step back and maybe do a little reimagining of where we want to be in 2020, and maybe perhaps a little bit more kind of refocusing of efforts. Our current plan has 10 instructional goals and 29 operational goals, and one of the things I'm suggesting to the board is that we might want to redefine that focus a little bit more and make sure that we're using our resources as efficiently and as effectively as we can to make those things happen. You know, it's important to do an environmental scan when you do strategic planning. We spent most of last year looking at all kinds of things within the school division. We had our resource utilization study. We had our shared services. We looked at class size reports. We did climate surveying. So, we've collected a lot of information. However, we do want to make sure that we have an opportunity to hear from any number of other stakeholder groups. So, on our page for strategic planning, there is a link to an online survey. We'd like to encourage everyone in the community that would like to take the time to participate to do that, go online. We have seven visioning questions that we're asking folks to think about. We're also using those same seven questions with our various advisor groups. My teacher advisor group met last night, and they took a shot at their responses, which we will be posting later this week. But just wanted to have the board be aware that we're in progress, and during the next few months, we'll be collecting input from a wide variety of stakeholders and hopefully coming to a point where the board is identifying or recommitting to a number of goals and key strategies. Right now, our current plan has 198 strategies. We're looking to try and refocus a little bit. I've said this to any number of groups, you know, if everything is important, kind of nothing is important. So, let's pick the things that are the high-value targets and go after those as a part of our concerted efforts. The board, our board, school board, will also be receiving a class size report this month, which, and as soon as the board receives that, we will make that available to supervisors as well. The format will be similar to what we did last year. We'll have a frequency distribution so that we'll be able to look at the actual number of classes that have a certain number of kids. The first portion of that report will focus on elementary to be followed by middle school and secondary. Our numbers are up a little bit. We're about a little over 200 students more than what we projected. Our enrollment as of yesterday is 27,568 students. The board has allocated the equivalent of 21 additional teaching positions to address class-size challenges across the division. Not all of those were teaching positions. Some of those teaching positions were converted into paraprofessionals. Some schools chose not to divide up existing classes but provide additional adult support within those classes. The board is also moving forward with a forensic investigative audit of our financial practices going back five years, fiscal year 11 through fiscal year 15, and we hope to have that underway shortly. Our regular auditors are here this week. We've brought some of our concerns to their attention, but we're going to be bringing somebody else in to take a deeper look across the previous five years. And then finally, we are, I am back visiting classrooms, one of the best parts, I think, of my job. I had the pleasure of visiting a middle school and an elementary school last week. Mr. Cavalier joined me. We learned about "not a box" in a kindergarten class, which was a great way to frame recycling, and got an opportunity for, to work with our kindergarteners in trying to figure out, well, what else could you do with a box besides throw it in the trash? So, with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Any questions? Mr. Thomas?
I'd be curious to see if it's possible, the schools, at least within my district, where there may be more than X amount of students in there, but that decision you just mentioned was made not to split the classes in two. So, when I get some of the complaints, I can speak to that and explain that that was the best decision for that specific. I'm assuming the principal's probably who you lean on to make that decision at the school level?
Well, it's a collaborative decision.
Okay.
So, we certainly involve our teachers as well.
Okay. I'd just be curious where those hotspots are and, you know, which ones were decided, let's keep the higher number of students, because we'll probably be explaining that one a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Benson. Keep those good numbers coming. I just saw our on-time graduation rate numbers are up.
Absolutely.
That's a great thing, and I tell you, we've got a great school system.
Yes, we do.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Curry Roberts, who runs the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance, to come up and give us a little bit of an update, and I hope that's not your speech. A little lengthy.
No, this is just the highlights, Mr. Chairman, my remarks. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. As I mentioned about a year ago, which was the first time I spoke to you after I got this job, I'd be trying to give routine updates at least twice a year, not necessarily within your budget cycle, but just come by and sort of tell you all what we're up to. And I do have a PowerPoint that I'll walk you through, and then I have a few remarks at the end of that. I also want to thank Anthony and Tim and the staff, the county administration. They've been great to work with this past year, very helpful and very kind to me and very understanding, explaining to me where things are in the county and how things work, and it's been a real education, but also a pleasure. This is our year-end activity report, our year, June 30. It gives you a, if you look across there, you've seen this chart in a draft form, but we did start populating it. Total inquiries means total projects that we worked on or qualified prospects last year. We had 34 total. That's up from nine the prior year. Of those, 20 came from the state and 14 were self-generated, and then you can follow on across to see the disposition of those. You'll see later in the report how this actually migrates to a summary metrics report that will become part of our annual report and from which you can base a return on investment. This is where we are so far this year. Through August, we haven't populated September numbers. What I would have wanted to show is that last year, our web traffic, we had about 30,000 hits to the website. We had a big spike that started in late summer when we went completely to online advertising. That trend has continued. July, August of this year is actually up from July, August of last year. In addition, we've picked up nine new projects since the beginning of this fiscal year. Three of those came through VEDP, and there were six that we generated directly, either through lead generation or there were referrals to us from other sources. And again, you can follow this all the way across in terms of the activity. These are organizational metrics. These are sort of looking internally. As Mr. Cavalier knows, at the October 19th board meeting, we're going to be talking about a new strategic plan. Once that's adopted, we'll be able to populate the rest of this organizational metrics. We did get our strategic plan, Mr. Cavalier, down to two pages, front and back, with four major objectives. And then we'll be talking about a bigger goal going out, say, five or six years. So, this will be more populated when I come back to you again next year. These are the marketing metrics. So, this is how you begin looking at, really, how do we do ratios? And this is our first pass at it. We don't have enough data to really talk about ratios, but we're doing some benchmarking against greater Richmond. How many, how many projects do you have to touch to get how many visits, to get how many announcements, those sorts of ratios? Again, as you can see here, last year, we picked up 34 new projects. There were two still in the pipeline. Out of those, we had three announcements. Capital investment for those three was 127 million. We are only talking about projects we touch. We don't touch it, we don't talk about it, and do not recognize it in our report. Total jobs were 250. This is a little bit better than the state average for announcements last year, primarily driven because of the Lidl announcement in Spotsylvania County. That was a 200-job announcement, which was unusually high. Again, we've added nine more projects this year. We worked our way down to where there were 16 of the 34 we touched the last year that carried forward into this year. So, we have roughly 25 in the pipeline. And again, benchmarking against Richmond, they keep about 300 projects in their pipeline, and they turn about 150 a year, simply because of the size and the longevity of their marketing efforts. We'll be a lot smarter at the end of five years than we are today as to how all these ratios work their way backwards. There is no ratio for how many web hits you have to the number of announcements that you get. That just doesn't exist, and we don't have enough data to even extrapolate it. This is the origin of our web hits domestically in the U.S. We track this monthly. These were the top 20 for last year. And as you can see, they're pretty diverse geographically around the state. There's some very specific reasons for some of these states, and for other states, it's kind of leaving us mystified as to why they're looking at our website. But what you see in the color, we actually visited five of those states last year on marketing trips or had calls or had projects that we worked. The ones in blue are, we're looking at for marketing trips this coming year, again, within our clusters, from the cluster analysis in 2013. And this is our marketing calendar at this point. We do have a trip to Connecticut next week. We have five confirmed meetings with qualified prospects. Qualified prospects are people who are looking to make a location decision sometime in the next 36 to 48 months. And we actually have a follow-up visit while we're up there with a project that's already visited the region. HIMSS Conference in Williamsburg, that's one that we and the pros looked at. That's data management for the healthcare industry, and it's their annual conference. We're actually going there as a partner with VEDP on behalf of the region. As you notice, we have two meetings set up this year to go down and brief the business attraction folks at VEDP. They are big site consultants and still pretty important to us. This year, this fall's meeting's already been set for November 4th. We're not doing the consultants forum in Florida mainly because I can go back to Florida next spring on somebody else's nickel to a conference and make calls then. So, as a budget management, we flip that to next spring. We're considering a 310 marketing. 310 marketing, and I should have mentioned that, that's a lead generation firm that we use out of Richmond. They basically make cold calls, helping you identify prospects, qualified prospects, and you pay them on a per-meeting basis. We could not afford to have the staff they have deployed to do that, but you only pay them on a confirmed meeting. So, it's a manageable budget. We then are going to partner with VEDP again at the Craft Brewers Conference. We have had some interest in the region from some sizable craft brewers, and that meeting this year is actually on the East Coast, so it made it a little more cost-effective to run up to Philadelphia. And then we are the only partner with VEDP at the Defense Communities Conference in Washington next summer, which we fortunately asked for it first and got it first. So, we, again, all of this will plow back into the metrics because it'll be lead generation of prospects that we find. A couple of other quick things. We, you know, I did meet with two data consultants back in June and came back and had a long chat with Tim about some of the feedback that we had received from them and have continued to engage them. I've even found a project that Stafford's working on that, it turns out, your sheriff and I have a unique contact with someone in the decision process for that lead, and he and I have a conference call with him next week. So, guy with a gun can't close the deal. I don't know what else to tell you. But Charlie has stepped up and was more than happy to pitch in and help out. We did complete the site audit of the about 350 acres behind the Stafford campus of the University of Mary Washington. As you recall, we don't have what the state would call certified sites in our region other than the data center up at Quantico. These are sites that would be more interesting for general commercial or industrial development, so for larger projects. The first site that we audited was Mary Washington's site. This is the results of the audit, and they actually have come up with a use for one of the back parcels there, and I think, Anthony, you're meeting with them next week to discuss that and this audit. But you all and Mary Washington both have the results of this audit. The next parcel that's being audited is actually in the city. Then we're going to jump over to King George and do their industrial park, and then whoever raises their hand next. And recall, we're paying for 75% of the audit with the county cost-sharing at 25%. Center for Economic Research that we and the University of Mary Washington and the Chamber have partnered on, as you know, their first deliverable is a commuter skills study. We know a lot about the commuting population. We just don't know what their educational background is, what their skill set, or actually what their occupations are. We know where they're going. We're not really sure what they do, which from an employer standpoint is pretty critically important. While we, there are 61,000 of them, and we think we can reassure people that we have available labor. When it comes to a specific company, they're looking for specific skills, and we can't drill into that information right now. That hopefully will be completed in January, but they already turned around a quick project over a weekend. We have a prospect, very unique employer for our region, frankly, unique for the state, and they typically like to go where there are other like kinds. It's a typical sort of a cluster, industry, cluster company, because they like being where there are plenty of people being trained or working in similar fields. And we don't have one of those companies like them. So, I went through the fields of study and the census data, sent it to the professor, and he came back within 48 hours and told me we had 1,948 people, and this company's only looking for 100, but that was their real negative on us as we couldn't identify the labor for them. So, we're still in the game. Haven't landed them, but we're still in the game, and that's actually the benefit that we wanted to receive when we set that up. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any questions for Mr. Roberts? Ms. Bomke?
Thank you. That was very interesting, Mr. Roberts. The only question I have is about the metrics page. It looks like you've established kind of a baseline there, but, I mean, we've been participating with the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance Agency for a long time. So, do we have any data from five or 10 years prior that would give us a measurement for what's been accomplished over this last year?
Not in a, not in a way that I'd feel comfortable using as a baseline. I'd rather benchmark off of other organizations than try to go back, because there was no activity log like the one that I provided you in the beginning. We only started doing that last September.
Okay.
So, that we could take that kind of information. I think it would be a good guess at best for me to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Appreciate you being here. At this time, we have presentations by the public. Any member of the public that'd like to address the board, you can come forward and address the board for three minutes on any subject you'd like unless it's on a public hearing calendar for this evening. I do have one speaker card. Ms. Ruth Carloni, would you come on down? Keep in mind, you've got three minutes. The green light will come on when you state your name and address. The yellow light means one minute, and the red light means please wrap it up. Thank you.
Ruth Carloni, 300 Mount Olive Road. For the evening meetings, please put the microphone in front of you. The biggest complaint is that most of the time you're talking, sitting sideways or not into the mic, okay? All right. The naming of the Aquatic Center for Olympic Gold Swimming and Diving Experts should not have been political, but it's become this way now because the failure, board, to recognize your error in judgment and failure to what the county residents see as just and right. In regards to item 12, the legislative initiatives for 2016, what happened to our request on property outside of the USA, the urban service areas? Now, we had asked our supervisor to please follow through on that, and apparently it died someplace. And this is for restrictions, again, on cluster developments in non-urban service areas. Those are the ones not slated for water and sewer. We're up a creek right now because of these by right requirements. All right. And please say no. I understand that GWV is coming, George Washington Village is coming up again for some changes. Say no. They're making fools out of you. It's been three or four times that they have come at the last minute, and that's been continuing and continuing. Now, it's time that they came back with a fresh, new, clear-cut proposal, meeting all the proffers, and that includes monetary and also with a true fiscal impact statement, an accurate traffic number figure, and the effect long-term on our schools. Stop wasting staff time. We have a great staff, but this should not keep happening over and over again. And by the way, where has the Rock Hill Supervisor been for several meetings, 3:00 meetings? You're getting paid to be here. All right. Thank you.
Anyone on my right care to address the board, since anyone on my left?
I'm Elaine Callender of 622 Lancaster Street in Falmouth. I'm wearing my George Votes No sticker today because George Washington would not like that George Washington Village project that the county is still considering. "What happened to all the beautiful open space of my youth?" George would ask. George Washington Village should be denied and not delayed. Regarding solid waste management issues, I recall back in the early '90s when the R Board was formed as a regional entity to meet Virginia's recycling goals and better manage the disposal of waste. The consultant at the time, CH2M Hill, initially talked about a county-run waste collection system for collecting trash and recyclables. I know about this because I was working for the Department of Public Works at the time and heard firsthand from the consultant. The idea was nixed by supervisors who were worried about their pickup truck-driving constituents who enjoy their weekly excursion to the landfill. Well, it's a new day, and the way it's done, it's been done in recent years, is not working from a financial standpoint. Some localities have made it work by running their own trash collection or by issuing a contract or multiple contracts to bring garbage to the landfill. The pickup at your home could even be paid for with real estate taxes, making the payment easier. That process allows for better cost control and better recycling control. It's something worth looking at. Regarding the proposed investment of $385,000 to promote the creation of 5,000 tech jobs based at the county's tech center, I have to say I am concerned that this is going to bring more temporary jobs to Stafford, not the kind of jobs that allow an individual or family to be able to count on a decent salary and benefits for at least a number of years. With another government shutdown looming, we need to ask ourselves if these 5,000 jobs are even going to materialize. I know of Quantico contractors that hired lots of IT people not long ago and then had to let them go because they weren't needed. By the way, what good does it do to build houses for the projected number of residents who are supposed to move here if their jobs won't allow them the security to pay a mortgage? We need to build an economy that provides lasting opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left care to address the board? Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Johnson. I live off Mountain View Road. I think the board is taking a right step, a step in the right direction with the flow control ordinance, but more can be done. Specifically, you can do a better job of recycling at the source and thereby increase recycling revenue. For instance, the Good Turn Earth Company operates in the city of Fredericksburg and become a model for improving recycling in Stafford. The city takes leaves and brings them to their site where they are composted along with food scraps and green waste. They create and sell a soil amendment that can be used in the garden instead of taking up space in landfills and generating methane gas. This requires separating waste from other garbage, but it's been done fairly easily. Wegmans provided out, provides outdated vegetables, and Sedexo at Mary Washington University is discussing composting cafeteria scrap, food scraps with Good Turn. Restaurant- composting cafeteria scrap, food scraps with Good Turn. Restaurants in Stafford can do the same as could residents and schools. The benefit, less space needed in the landfill, a longer cell life, and far less methane gas escaping into the atmosphere. Even the methane gas recovery system, methane escapes and exacerbates climate change. Better sorting of recyclables would enable the county to increase revenue. For example, when I go to the landfill, I take paper and put it in its own bin with cardboard. There's no glass. If you sort glass separately, then you wind up not having glass break and contaminate paper, making those recyclables useless. There's some discussion, the county waste may be exempt from being forced to bring garbage into the landfill because they have a site built before 1992. Our Board staff is concerned the revenue loss would be crippling. There is a simple solution. Have the county take over managing garbage pickup and delivery like some other jurisdictions do. Issue an RFP and have one or more haulers take over garbage collection in Stafford under a contract. They would propose a rate to pick up and bring garbage to the landfill under terms specified by Stafford County. Then place a new line item on all property owners' real estate tax bill to cover the cost of picking up the garbage. It's a fee, not a tax. The revenue estimate for the flow control ordinance indicates it will increase revenue to cover the debt service for the bond, but still doesn't cover all the costs, the next sale, nor replenishing the mandatory escrow account. Staff estimates the life of the cell F2 will be seven years, but unless we plan correctly, we'll be right back then where we are today. No funds for the next sale, nor to replenish the escrow account. It's time to do this right and stop ignoring all the costs of operating the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Board reports, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Thomas?
Defer.
Ms. Bomke?
Defer.
Mr. Cavalier?
Just a few items to discuss. At the Infrastructure Committee meeting today, we discussed some road projects. In particular, the Anvil Road Intersection update that we received, that's the road that leads out of one of the gates at Quantico onto 610. The bids for that project were received by VDOT for, I think, a fourth time now, and they were higher than anticipated, but we think that perhaps money can be shifted from other projects that came in under budget to that particular project. So we think that's going to be a go with VDOT. There's also another project that was under budget was the Route One Widening Study from the Prince William County Line to Telegraph Road in Stafford County. So we need to decide then what we will do, and we'll have to probably send a recommendation to FAMPO on how to spend those remaining funds that we have left over from that particular budget item. And last but not least is the mine road sidewalk project, and that is moving along nicely so that much-needed sidewalk can be constructed. As Superintendent Benson did state, I did travel with him to two schools, both in my district, Shirley High Middle School, where we went to a class that I didn't have. Whenever I went to school, it was a computer keyboarding class. We only had typewriter keyboarding whenever I went to school, and things are a lot different now. And then the other class that we went was at Wide Water Elementary School, and he mentioned the little box project, but what he didn't mention was that, I don't know if he did for sure, but it was a kindergarten class. And so I was kind of a helper that day, so I had a table of six kindergarteners assigned to me. And by the time I got out of there, in that hour, I felt like I had done more than a work share of work, so I think that, in particular, kindergarten teachers need to be paid more. And just to finish up, I did attend some civic activities. Quay Harbor Evening Lions Club had a reverse raffle on Saturday night. So that concludes my report.
Mr. Millday?
Well, in the vein of trash talk and methane gas, let me just tell you that the idea of expanding government, the government's role in trash and forcing people to use a public trash service is not something you're going to ever see me support, and I hope that the county administrator still remembers that I'd like to see in the next budget, at least what it looks like, to not charge people to drop their trash off at the landfill individually. I'm definitely looking out for those pickup-driving constituents, including myself, who still takes my trash to the landfill. We have the highest, one of the highest recycling rates in the state that's voluntary, not mandated. We're hitting around fifty percent every year, so we can always do better, but let's not forget where we've come. The George Washington Village is just another application. We have to give them their due. They've only had a couple of public hearings, I think, and certainly no one on this board, you've never heard anyone voice support for that project. So anyone listening in the audience or the public should know that this board hasn't weighed in on George Washington Village, certainly on the positive side. In the last, we had a Community and Economic Development Committee meeting today. Actually, several good things came up, but I don't want to go into detail because they're hard to, probably hard to follow, but working with Northern Virginia Conservation Trust is something we're going to, we're going to take a look at what it might look like to have them help us bring together some of our different programs, TDR, PDR, easement programs, land preservation programs. Falmouth Overlay District is a great thing that Bob Thomas has been shepherding through, and you'll have a public meeting down there in a few months to talk about a really exciting idea in Falmouth. And P2 Lot Wits, you guys will hear about that soon. Outdoor uses of M1 Zones, that's, those are the highlights of the Community and Economic Development meeting. And then in the last couple of weeks, I've done my regular duties that I'm proud and honored to do for the Board, representing you on PRTC, where they talk about buses, a lot, Virginia Railway Express. I met with the Secretary of Natural Resources, Molly Ward, and Clyde from DCR, the Director of DCR. You'll hear more. There's a letter, I believe, in your add-on, in the folder. Do we have that letter?
In the Board's mail, yes.
That's about Crowsnest Harbor. They're interested. I attended a Friends of the Rappahannock River Fest event. This was a great event, always. I do a lot of HOA meetings, but this HOA meeting for this townhouse is right behind us, off of Red Oak, is a good one because it ties into the sidewalk discussion that we had today on infrastructure. I've asked about it over and over again, and I've asked, I asked the group, and I got some good head nods, to make sure that the next time we start spending money on sidewalks, after the sidewalks that we're going to get in Garrisonville Road. Today, we voted on that we really have to, I can't imagine that there's any greater need in the county between putting a sidewalk from the church to the courthouse. There's thousands of people off of Red Oak, and they're walking down the street to get here, and that's not going to get any better. I represented the Board on FAMPO. That was an exciting meeting, right after we asked that they support the adding a lane between 140 and 143 on 95. FAMPO immediately argued that down, and after a spirited discussion, said no, and they killed the project for at least a year. So FAMPO was having, Fredericksburg against Potsie were having nothing to do with us rearranging the priorities, how that's how they saw it in the region, which is not true. This has been on their books for a while, to add a lane on each side. But believe me, we're not giving up, and that's one way that money can be spent, that Jack mentioned, which would be in the study portion, because right now, VDOT's looking at me saying, if you want a study, you pay for the study. And so we're going to have to play hardball again, and we've done it before, and it works. I had a meeting with Wysh Road owners out there who had a great idea, and I'm mentioning this because, Tim, I don't know where it went, but I know they had a meeting with VDOT. Some of the configurations on the newest version of an interchange, the Divergent Diamond at the courthouse road 95 intersection, don't make sense as far as access to existing parcels and projects that we have coming down the Pike in the Wysh Road area, and they are exciting, and I want to make sure that we are paying attention to what VDOT is planning and what we think really makes sense as far as connecting to the exit from the highway to Hospital Boulevard. All right. I'm getting a head nod on that. And then, of course, Stafford Tech and Research Park met again this morning, and we are, I'm going to ask, if it hasn't already been done, that we pull that item and defer it until the first meeting of December. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Sellers?
Okay. I attended, or I went with the EDA to Buffalo last week, and we attended the Association of University Research Parks, that goes along with the tech parks. Very good conference, but that's kind of why we're pulling it, so I'm glad you're deferring it at this point in time. Also met with Settlers Landing, and if you remember, a couple of months ago now, we, they came to us asking for some traffic calming measures. They have, their HOA has put that on hold for right now. Sounds like politics. They're not ready to pull the trigger on that. So we'll keep meeting with them, and I'll let you guys know what they decide. And Team Power Kick, so I attended, they had an annual event that they're going to start doing, and while I've talked a lot about them and what they're accomplishing, I didn't realize the extent of their goals. So this is a young team, that their goal and their stated goal is to go to the Olympics, and so they're raising money and getting out there and competing in international and national conferences and competitions and doing really, really well. So just keep your eye out for them. That's all I have.
Mr. Sterling?
I'll defer.
Mr. Schumate?
Defer, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Romanello?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, just a couple of quick notes. Last week, several of our employees participated with folks throughout the region and Day of Action through the United Way, assisting folks in need around the community. Two Saturdays ago, before we almost had Hurricane Joaquin, the Emergency Preparedness Expo was held by Fire and Rescue and the Sheriff's Office. Had about 200 people come in to learn how to be ready for nature's wrath. Restaurant Week is coming up in Stafford. It's October 16th through 25th. We have eighteen restaurants participating in the county. Ms. Bomke reminded me, the superintendent sent a very nice letter. The chairman recognized these folks at your last meeting, but again, the school board's formal recognition of the folks in Stafford who helped get the high school open, including our building official, Kerry Jamison, the deputy building official, John Schaefer, Scotty Dean, and Robert Reed, who are two of our inspectors, Andrew Melkin and Ben Goldman in the Fire Marshal's Office, and then Jason Towery, who was one of our engineers in the Utilities Department. Just an outstanding job in getting the school opened. Chief Lockhart is at the White House today. He was invited to participate in a conversation with National Security Council on mass care incidents, and he is the only fire chief in the country that was asked to participate. So we're very proud of the chief today for that. And before I get to agenda changes, it is Pam Timmons' birthday. And Mr. Broody will be singing to you all later, as he does every year. Agenda changes, ladies and gentlemen, item number 14A, which Mr. Cavalier mentioned, which is to express support to FAMPO for the construction contract regarding the Anvil Road Intersection improvements. The deletion of item number 13, as Mr. Millday just mentioned, to move that to a future meeting that has to do with funding for the Stafford Technology and Research Park. We'll do the recognition of the 2015 Fill the Boot campaign at your next meeting, October 20th. And then also, we can delete item number 21, which is the last public hearing of the night. We did reach a settlement this morning on that, and that's, was to consider condemnation and exercise of the county's quick-take powers in connection with the Route One North Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. And I would also mention item number 12, which we'll get to here in just a minute. We have a revised resolution from the Board's Legislative Committee for your consideration. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the new agenda?
Some of, second.
Second. Have a motion to second. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Any member like to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, do I have a motion to pass the consent agenda? Have a motion to, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 12, county administration adopt the Board's 2016 legislative initiatives, proposed resolution R15-305. Mr. Romanello?
Mr. Broody, please.
Mr. Broody.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Timberudy, Deputy County Administrator, the county staff, along with the Legislative Committee, made up of Ms. Sellers and Ms. Bomke, have been meeting for the past six or seven weeks and have crafted the agenda that's before you. We do have our legislative team from Richmond here to walk you through those agenda items, and they'll certainly be here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you.
So I'd like to introduce Patrick Cushing and Ken Hutchinson with Williams Mullen, and they can walk you through kind of where we've, where we've come from and what we have in front of us, and then we do have a few little changes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Patrick Cushing, good to be here. In early October, I want to stress that because one of the things that Ken and I have been discussing with the Legislative Committee and the Board is doing some more front-end work before it gets late in the year, as we get crunched with requests for bills and legislators get crunched with elections. So it's good to be here in early October, which is a key, a key aspect of the legislative agenda, is getting it done a little bit earlier, which gives us more time with the legislators. So you should have a revised agenda in front of you. I'm going to go through a couple of the initial items, and then Ken will wrap it up and talk about the rest of the agenda. First off, we have cable franchises. The Board is requesting consideration of legislation directing cable operators to be required to provide cable coverage. Right now, the standard is at 30 homes per mile and more. The cable companies are required to come in and lay cable. What we're requesting is a reduction below the 30 homes per mile. This is a bill that we introduced last year at the request of the Board, or I should say, actually, we monitored, but there was a meeting with the Telecommunications Association, Senator Stewart, and some other interested parties last year. We understand, while that was a good conversation, it did not get us anywhere, so we're going to go back this year and take a fresh look at the issue and see if we can't find a way of moving that ball forward. The second issue is public day school funding. If you recall, this was on our agenda two years ago, and this was really dealing with the program between, supporting the program between Stafford and the Stafford School Board, looking at ways of incentivizing local governments, of course, Stafford being one of them, to partner with local school boards to develop public day school programs that could leverage Community Service Act dollars. And if you recall, one of the issues with that was when students right now are served in the public school setting, they're getting a DOE match rate. If they are directed, if they are directed to go outside of the public school system into a private placement, those dollars come from the Community Services Act pool of funds, and that comes at a higher match rate. It's also more expensive. So there's some potential here to save the state and local governments' money, and so we're going to be looking at supporting legislation that achieves that. Very importantly, this issue, while it first popped up two years ago, we've been working on ever since. The Virginia Commission on Youth was directed to study this issue two years ago. They are going to be wrapping up their two-year study in November, and we've worked with staff who have been great at attending meetings. We got a member of staff appointed to the study committee that's looking at this and to present to the Virginia Commission on Youth, and we've been involved, Ken and I, in talking with legislators on the commission to try to get some type of proactive legislation or budget language recommended through that process. So we're optimistic about that process, but no final recommendation report yet. Running parallel to that, some of you may have heard of an initiative called Go Virginia, which was released by the Virginia Business, the Virginia Higher Education Business Council, close to that acronym. It's a collaboration among universities and some other partners that's really focusing at a high level on economic development. It's going to be a budget and legislative initiative that's going to go forward this session. The details are not hammered out, but I have met with representatives of that initiative and brought up the legislation that we're working on and the issue that we've worked on in Stafford on the public day school funding, and they're very interested in talking more about that because they're looking for ways for local governments, local school boards, and then they also say higher ed, partnering to save the state and locals' money. And so this certainly falls into that And so, this certainly falls into that bucket. So, I'll be working with them as well, and hopefully, they'll be able to put that on their legislative agenda. So, with that, I can take any questions on those two issues, or I can turn it over to Mr. Hutchinson to finish.
Any questions, Ms. Sellers?
To the CSA conversation, it wasn't just staff that came. We had, it was interesting, before the Commission on Youth, we had Donna Kraus and Sue Clark from the schools, and they showed our program, but then right after them, our private day school here in the county presented, and kind of showed the whole process of how we work with the private day schools, and it's really gotten some traction down in Richmond, and we're hearing good things, so just wanted to add to that.
Yes, no?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cavalier.
Didn't I hear recently that they changed the Comprehensive Services Act to Children's Services Act?
Yes. Yeah, I think that took effect July 1. Old habits kind of die hard.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Should we change our language in our resolution?
Yes, that's a good point.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ken Hutchinson also with Williams Mullen. Picking up where Mr. Cushing left off, you see the third item on your proposed resolution would be to institute a floor on the gas tax, and specifically, that's the 2.1% gas tax authority that was given to localities many years ago in the VRE footprint. And as, as most localities in this region have noted, with the decline in gas prices in the past year or so, actually, two years, there's been a precipitous drop-off in revenues for road funding. In fact, staff compiled an analysis that noted in FY '15, 3.8 million on sales, averaging at 2.77 a gallon. If the $3 floor had been in place, they would have, the county would have collected 4.1 million, which would have been 300,000 in additional revenue. Target will probably be less for FY '16, given the, where gas prices are, but this is going to be an effort that most Northern Virginia localities are part of, and there'll be a lot of stakeholders that will be part of an effort to ensure that there will not be a further drop-off in collections of that 2.1% tax.
Yes, Mr. Milde.
We talk about this a lot at VRE and PRTC. I'm glad that we're supporting this. Do you anticipate any trouble from the Republicans in the House?
Well, I think anytime that there's something that may be viewed as a tax increase, which I think some may argue that that's what this is, I think there's clearly going to be some concern. But I think there is a recognition that nobody ever anticipated gas prices plummeting to where they are today, and that the whole point of what took place several years ago to try and bring more funding into the process is sort of that goal will be defeated if, if the price of gas continues to impact what you collect at the local level for your mass transit projects.
And how do you, how do you think it's going to, the letter of this law was going to look? Is it going to be, are you going to stop it at $2, $1.50? Like, we're talking about four or five cents on the gallon. I mean, when do you, when is it, are you going to pick a date out in the future where that's, that's our mark?
I think the future date is what the General Assembly did with House Bill 2313, if my memory's correct.
That's Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads?
Correct, correct. I wouldn't, at this juncture, wouldn't want to speculate, because there's nothing in writing. Nobody's got a bill out there. No one's picking around it.
How far out in the future do they do it on that?
Sorry?
On the Hampton Roads legislation and Northern Virginia Transportation Authority legislation, how far out in the future do they make the mark? Do you recall?
I want to say it was July 1 of the year the bill passed.
Okay, so not too far.
It was not very far.
I see.
But, Mr. Cavalier, did you, you look like you might be raising your hand because you know the answer to that question.
Mr. Cavalier?
So, we already are in, because we're in the, what, non-attainment zone or whatever here, and we, we have a different mixture of gasoline that we have to blend in the summertime, that makes our fuel prices higher than Fredericksburg, who's not in Pennsylvania. So, right now, there's a differential in, in the cost, and am I correct in assuming that Fredericksburg won't be part of this either, that you say Northern Virginia localities, which I think, won't that just make that cost even greater if you buy gas in Stafford versus driving down the road to Fredericksburg? Because you're going to compound it by having the floor difference plus the, the special blend.
Sure. I can't speak with any great certainty what Fredericksburg would want to do, but the, if they are a VRE-eligible locality now, already collecting that 2.1% add-on tax, it's not inconceivable that they would want to be encompassed in the localities that pursue this floor.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I think the legislation would need to be written to incorporate the NVTC and PRTC localities. So, Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania would, would be on the same page as Stafford. I can't imagine the legislature would carve us out, or Prince William, or anybody else, so.
I just didn't see that in this write-up right here, and it just concerned me.
Yeah.
Because people already complain about why is gas higher than Stafford than it is in Fredericksburg? They don't understand that.
Yeah, I think we'd all be, we're, we're all in this together.
Yes, Mr. Thomas?
The state gasoline tax, there's, there's a floor for their, their version, correct?
Correct.
So, they have a budget stopgap. So, really, what we're asking for is just to be treated the same as them, so.
Correct. This, I think this was probably an oversight when they were doing 2313 and 2012 to capture this, and while they were addressing the floor question for the other tax.
Just a clarification, the state doesn't have a, doesn't fluctuate, it just has a set pennies on it, pennies, right? How does their, how does theirs work? They don't go up or down. We're, we're asking for the ability to get more when the prices go back up, but not go beneath a certain amount. It's slightly different, correct? Was it 17 cents? Where are we at with the?
That was the old system.
What happened? Tell me what it is, remind me.
So, it's, yeah. It, it's basically, it's a, it's a percentage now, as opposed to a per-gallon tax.
I see. Okay, so they did change it to same?
Five, five and some change percent.
And that's, and what's their minimum?
I think the floor applies to the, if I'm not mistaken, the Hampton Roads in Northern Virginia. Yeah, I'll, I'll let my transportation expert weigh in here.
Yeah, the, the gas tax was changed from 17 cents a gallon to, it was originally three and a half cents on the wholesale price. There was a trigger in there that bumped that up to 5.1% when Congress failed to act on some tax language for online sales. So, we're at 5.1% statewide. And what they did to that 5.1% for the floor is they actually picked a point in time that was not in the future, but was in the past for gas. So, they knew what the floor was going to be when they passed the bill. And I think it's around $2.82, or something around there, is the floor for the, for the state. And it was, from my experience with legislators and talking with them, it was pretty much an oversight that the Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads localities weren't given a floor as well.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Bomke?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what they've said in, in the conversation regarding the state. The other language that we added in just today at our legislative meeting was the next to the last paragraph, and as Anthony and all of us have talked about, we're kind of beating a dead horse here, but now that we're out of the recession, the state has continued to not fund our constitutional officers at the levels where they, where we are staffed. So, we did put in here that we would like the state to fulfill their obligations for funding our constitutional officers. So, you'll see that, that's as an add-on as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
So, the language you see below the gas tax floor are really items that derive from department chairs and feedback received by staff and collected by the Legislative Committee. And they, I think the way to really look at them is things that you all would voice support for, or opposition to, in some cases, but where Stafford County would not be the lead voice on these issues, but where Patrick and I would be looking for the opportunities to make sure that if the folks who would be the natural leaders on these issues, we could make sure that Stafford's voice was heard in, in their efforts to address these issues. And so, I think they're, I think they're pretty self-explanatory, but happy to address any of them on a case-by-case basis.
And a member want, anyone addressed individually?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. And, um, did we, do we, what, what became of the, I'm looking at it over here, what became of, but where are we putting the, what's different about, you don't want to say already? I'm talking about when we asked, I think I included in my language, asking the board to support a legislative priority having to do with extending the hot lanes and fixing the problem of 95 last week, last time we had a meeting. I thought that I got a vote on that. Did I misspeak or misunderstand?
We don't know what you're talking about.
You don't remember the hot, yeah, yeah. Anthony?
Didn't we send that to FAMPO?
I think, I think in addition to FAMPO, we all, I asked that it be a left priority.
That's correct, and it should have been in this. That's, that's, that's our mistake. That's right. The board did take action, both to send it to FAMPO as well as to our legislators.
And is it too late, or are we going to add it? Okay.
We just did.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
One more thing.
Yes, Ms. Bomke?
Just one other thing. We did receive this, I believe, well, a number of us received this proposal from the SALT organization, which is the social action linking together, and we received this on Sunday evening. So, we kind of decided at our legislative meeting today that we're going to, we need an opportunity to study this and decide if we're going to add any of these initiatives into our resolution. It's not going to happen at this point in time, but we're also having a joint meeting with the school division. We also don't have anything in here for the schools, so we'll be talking about that at the upcoming Joint Schools Meeting, which is in a week or so, October 14th, to be exact, per Marsha. So, we could be coming back and having a revised resolution.
Anything else, Mr. Thomas?
I just wanted to say, good job of the committee. I think they did a good job getting rid of some of the issues that disappeared, but really focusing down on three, but still having the ability to have these guys kind of latch on to a couple of bills without having to come back to us to get permission. So, I kind of like the format this year.
I agree. Now, we've got some, do you have anything further?
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much for your time, and.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you very much. We need some changes before we can vote, is that correct, Mr. Romanello?
I, I.
Bring it back to the evening session.
We certainly could, Mr. Chairman. I think the, that what we just explained was R-15-305R. We would need to incorporate the language from the last meeting with respect to the hot lanes. I think we can, we can certainly handle that if you'd like to dispense with it now.
On motion.
And also to change Comprehensive Service Act. That has to be.
Children's.
Yeah. I'll make a motion with that addition and correction, I'm sorry.
And was admissions tax extension included or not? Because that's on the electronic version, but I didn't hear him mention it.
So, we're, we're forgetting about that? So, I wouldn't say forgetting about it, but I think the, the sense was, until there is a more decisive action taken by the developer that would have been interested in the admissions tax, it's probably best not to try and renew it, because I think rightly so, folks are going to say, well, what, what do you have that demonstrates that this opportunity is still on the table? And so, I think what we assured members of the Legislative Committee and the staff is that should the developer come back into play and indicate a renewal of interest in trying to begin the negotiations again, Patrick and I feel very comfortable at, at that point, being able to reinsert the authority, whether it be in the budget or legislatively in the 2017 session. But we just thought it would be, probably given where things stand, it'd be difficult to ask your, one of your delegates or senators to take on that effort without something more substantial from the developer to point to and make that ask.
Does the current tax expire June 30th of '16?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Authority, you're right.
Anything else? I have a motion by Mr. Milde with the changes noted. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up. Item number 13 has been deferred. Item number 14, county administration authorized the county administrator to advertise a public hearing to consider amending the county's solid waste ordinance, resolution R-15-303. Mr. Dayton?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Keith Dayton, Deputy County Administrator. If I could have the computer please. I'll begin by reminding the board that you authorized 2.25 million in debt for the construction of Cell F2 at the regional landfill. These funds would be combined with an equal amount financed by the city of Fredericksburg, and also combined with just over 1 million in our board reserve funds to complete construction of Cell F2. We expect those bonds to be sold late this month, and we will have the proceeds in early November. And we've also estimated the total annual debt service for these bonds at 700,000. That is an estimate. Yes, Mr. Sterling?
How much of that 700,000 becomes county responsibility versus an our board responsibility divided, versus divided between us and Fredericksburg?
Well, the way the sales, bond sales agreement has been structured, the R Board is pledging reserve, funds from tipping fees, revenues from tipping fees, and they go first to retire this debt.
So, the first, we're just backup?
That's correct.
Or reinsurance for.
Yes, sir. That's a good way to characterize it. The, as I mentioned, the R Board has pledged revenues from our tipping fees towards the debt service payment. Now, the R Board has always operated without any debt, so this is a new expense, over and above our operating expenses. And as part of an overall analysis, we believe, or we've estimated, that about 30,000 tons per year of solid waste that's generated in the two localities is currently being diverted to other landfills. We've seen this activity pick up markedly in the last year to two years. And if we were to receive this solid waste at the landfill, over the scales, we believe that sufficient revenue would be available to fund the debt service plus the operating costs without any problem whatsoever. There are tools available to localities to address the diversion of solid waste. The R Board was advised of this and asked staff to come to the board of supervisors to, to discuss it further, and the city is pursuing a concurrent effort on their part. This brings us to flow control. That is the authorization that the state allows localities basically to mandate or require that all solid waste, municipal solid waste that is generated within a locality be delivered to the landfill designated by that locality. There are certain limitations. These include that recyclable materials and construction demolition debris must be excluded. Single-family homes and farms may be exempt, and also, solid waste for a waste energy facility are also excluded. We don't believe that any of these exclusions will have any kind of impact on our overall revenue projections. So, we looked at our county ordinance, and we believe that Section 2110 is, does deal with solid waste, but it could be modified to incorporate provisions for flow control. The proposed changes that we put into draft ordinance 01540 would implement flow control, but subject to the limitations imposed by the state. So, they reflect state limitations. The, also, the ordinance, as drafted, would allow the R Board to designate disposal locations and to set the effective date. We added that so that we could coordinate our implementation with the actions by the city. They are trying to follow a similar path, but they meet at different times, and we're not sure ultimately when they're going to be completed with their action. And also, we've been communicating with, with commercial haulers, and we believe there's a chance that voluntary compliance effort a chance that voluntary compliance efforts may make it unnecessary to mandate this, but we wanted to have the authority in place so that if we don't get voluntary cooperation, we can basically immediately mandate that they bring trash to the landfill. So, there's also some findings included in the statute that a locality must make before they implement flow control, and that is that other options are unavailable, inadequate, unreliable, or not economically feasible. We believe that without our local landfill, our residents that right now bring trash themselves to the landfill, and also a multitude of businesses that rely on our landfill to get rid of their waste as well, would have to take it to another facility, the nearest one being in King George, and that would not be economically feasible for our residents. We also must find that flow control measures are necessary to ensure the availability of adequate funding for financing or construction of landfill facilities. I've addressed that previously. We need the 30,000 tons per year to offset the debt service from Cell F2, so we believe we meet that finding. And then also, we must ensure there's adequate landfill capacity and that we will have that in early November when Cell F2 is complete. Now, the state also requires that localities hold a public hearing before enacting flow We do recommend approval of Resolution R 15303, which authorizes a public hearing to consider the matter of implementing flow control for Stafford County. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Cavalier?
Mr. Dayton, one of the reasons stated when we started discussing the landfill operations and the deficits that we're currently experiencing was that the commercial haulers were choosing other options other than the Rappahannock Regional Landfill, i.e. King George and some other places. So, if we mandate that the current commercial haulers within the constraints of the county come to our landfill, then is that enough revenue generation to make up for what we're gaining through the fees charged to residents?
No, Mr. Cavalier, it's not. What we are looking at is revenue that we must have in addition to the resident fees that we currently have in place. There will not be enough revenue there to eliminate the resident fees.
What is the delta on, or at least your guess on what that's gonna be when we start mandating, if we start mandating?
We have projected revenues of about 700,000. We've also budgeted in the current fiscal year revenues of 750,000 from the resident fee portion of our overall. So, revenue fees are significant.
700 plus the 750 to make ends meet.
That's correct, Mr. Cavalier.
Other questions? Ms. Sterling?
To what extent, when you look at this, okay, presumably the commercial haulers are taking their trash to other landfills for cost purposes, correct? I mean, they're not doing it cause, hey, I like the drive. So, if that's the case, what are we looking at in terms of an increased cost that those individuals will pay, or more to the point, that they're gonna pass on to their customers, the residents in this case of Stafford County? Again, it looks like the residents of Stafford County who use commercial haulers will be picking up the cost of this whole operation. The city's got their municipal waste, so it doesn't really apply to them. We're gonna get stuck again with a massive, with what appears to be probably a $700,000 bill to those individuals who have commercial hauling. So, if I'm paying right now to have a commercial hauler, which I am, I'm now gonna have to pay more while the city's not in that position, other individuals that Mr. Milde and others have talked about not paying any fees, they take their trash there to the dump. I'm going to, once again, everybody's going to be doing it on my back and the back of everybody else who has commercial hauling. Is that not correct?
Mr. Sterling, I believe it's a safe assumption that commercial haulers will pass on additional costs to their customers.
To the tune of $700,000, and that's gonna fall on those individuals in Stafford who have commercial hauling, cause it doesn't apply to anybody else.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sterling. Well, there will also be a similar ordinance that's being pursued in the city.
They have a municipal that already takes it to the, so it's not gonna do anything there.
Well, it will, because there's also business customers that the city doesn't service.
Well, and it's not 700,000. That's assuming it was free to drop it off wherever else they do. There's a delta.
So, they're gonna raise an additional 700,000. So, if you're gonna raise an additional 700,000, that's 700,000.
But, the hauler's already paying to take it somewhere now. It may be-
That's correct.
There's a delta there.
They're paying not only transport costs to a landfill further away, but they're also paying tipping fees at that landfill that would offset that overall increase in cost. That's an excellent point, Mr. Thomas.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Thomas.
Like a lot of the ordinances we have, what's the enforcement mechanism? Are we gonna have somebody sitting on Route 3 counting trash trucks that go by?
Well, the way the draft ordinance reads, it is a class-one misdemeanor. We don't, and, well, right now, we're not staffed, obviously, to patrol the borders, but we do believe that the two primary companies that are serving, servicing our customers right now in Stafford and Fredericksburg will comply with this without objection and without lawsuit.
Mr. Milde?
Overall, the cost to commercial haulers to take their trash to landfill over the last decade, has it gone up or down? From, at our landfill? Especially the big haulers? Yeah, tipping fees.
Tipping fees have gone up.
How much have they gone up?
Well, right now, the base rate is at $43 per ton.
I'm talking about the two, the big guys who get the discounts.
That's correct. Our last analysis indicated that they were paying, on average, about 34 a ton, and that has gone up probably 10% in the last four or five years.
So, 10%. The effect of us charging people to take trash in their pickup trucks to landfill, what have your commercial haulers told you that has done for business?
What we've heard is that that has increased their customer base.
Right. You're paying for trash one place or the other, might as well not have to put it in your truck and take it there. What does it cost? What do you know about the cost to pay for whoever, Waste Management or County Waste, to pick up your trash at your house? How's that price been moving around?
Well, I'm not sure what the average customer, I know it does vary.
Mine hasn't changed. I can tell you that.
I'm asking anyone-
$25 a month.
If they're concerned about the cost of your trash pickup, well, how's yours looking? Going up, going down?
Mine goes through the HOA fees, which has gone up.
So, things are, it's gone up. They're charging, they're charging anymore, although they have found-
HOA fees, I can't tell you what the component of that was.
Well, here's what's happening. What they've done, is they've, the big guys, County Waste has went out and bought up every darn trash truck, trash company they can find, and they have found, so they're getting rid of their competition. They have found, and God bless them, I mean, I'm all about capitalism, they've found a way to take their trash to spots of many, we wouldn't approve their transfer station here, they tried to put it here. Now, they take it to Four Mile Run, or whatever it's called, Fork, and they take it out of their trash trucks, and they crush it and stick it in 18-wheelers and head it on down to Richmond, somewhere around there, and that's actually cheaper. They're finding ways, they're making more profit, which is good, and they should, but if you think that they're gonna have to pass on the additional cost to, I don't know that that's necessarily true, what they're gonna have to do is continue to compete with Waste Management. That's what they're gonna have to do. They're still, their prices are driven by their competition, and how much they can get. So, and I'll tell you another thing, we need this. The second little sub-bullet point that says that we may not actually implement this is serious. We don't want to have to do this, but in discussions at the our board level, trying to figure out how to make, not have to come back to this group, this board, this body, and ask for more money to run the landfill, we really would appreciate you supporting us in this. It's part of the negotiations. They need to know that we are seriously considering this and can use this tool.
Any further questions? Ms. Sellers?
We're just being asked to send this to public hearing, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Imagine the discussion that evening. Any other questions, Ms. Bumpkin?
Yes, I would just like to say, and when you bring this back, Mr. Dayton, if the board does approve this for public hearing, I would like to see a lot more numbers. I'd like to see what the debt service coverage ratios were over the last 10 years, and what they've been since we've incorporated the additional fee for residents to take their trash to the landfill, because I have a lot of people in my district that are still mad about that fee at the landfill. And I'll just tell you, I'll repeat to you what they say to me. Ms. Bumpkin, I don't have any children in schools, I don't use social services, I hope that I don't need the public safety resources, and I use very little services in this county for my taxes, but the one thing I do is I take my trash to the dump every Saturday, and I don't wanna pay for it. So, I'm just reciting to you what their thoughts are, and so, I would like to see a lot more information if this does eventually come back to the board regarding debt service coverage ratios, and what happened when we started, let's see, wouldn't we start March? Was it March when we started collecting out at the landfill?
It was in March.
March, okay. And what those, like Paul just indicated, that the commercial haulers, a lot of people have gone more to the commercial haulers, which is, I know what, you know, staff was hoping would happen, but what are those numbers? I'd like to see those.
Any other questions?
Right. When I asked the debt service, yeah, no debt service prior to this, but we will have it now.
This will be the first debt service the landfill has ever had?
Do I have a motion to carry this to public hearing?
I'm sorry, yes, I make a motion, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries six to one. We'll now go into closed session. There are three items. The second item on closed session, the second item on closed session, I will be recusing myself, as the two gentlemen on the contract that we're talking about are close personal friends. Mr. Thomas, would you carry us into closed session?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer a motion to authorize a closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for, one, discussion concerning the resignation of a specific county employee; two, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, and discussion of the terms or scope of the contract, where discussions in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board; and, three, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding Metz versus Board of Supervisors of Stafford County, cases 13, 259, 261, 262, 263, 264, et cetera. Pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, A7, and A29, this discussion may occur in a closed meeting.
Do I have a second? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries seven to zero. We are in closed session. Do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
Motion to certify.
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to one. We're recessed till 7:00 PM. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the evening meeting of the October 6 Stafford County Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like for you all to stand, have a moment of silence for those folks that lost their lives in Oregon, and for the residents of South Carolina. After that, I'll ask you to remain standing while Mr. Thomas leads us in the pledge. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the board would like to recognize and honor the Babe Ruth Stafford Baseball League, Babe Ruth Baseball, eight-year-old state champions who are here with us tonight. And I'd like the director of the Stafford Baseball League, Mr. Robert Drystat, to meet I think this is the first time, well, not the first time, one of the very few times that we've actually won a state championship. I'm gonna ask Robert to introduce the team and the coaches, and as he calls your name, if you'll just come up front, and we've got a short video that he wants to show everyone, so sit back and enjoy.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I need to see Mr. Dugan down here. First of all, I'd like to thank the board. State champions don't happen by accident. It takes teamwork on our level, the supervisor level, and the parks and rec. The fields at Parks have been, they're just better. And now that the fields are better, this is what we have. Mr. Dugan, please introduce.
Okay, introducing your eight-year-old rookie, state champions, starting with Andrew Cone. C.T. Reed. C.T. Reed. Louis Vargas. Will Prophet. Jackson Hamel. Evan Prophet. Dominic Dugan. Spencer Way. Tanner Wagstaff. Casey Fletcher. Anthony DiClemente. Cole Rain.
We have a little clip. For those of you who may not be baseball folks, first of all, it was a real pleasure to see. It's about a minute long. What you're gonna see is what happens when things go wrong on a baseball field. But, what you're also gonna see is a bunch of young men rallying to one another to back up plays properly. And I have to tell you, watch the catcher's reaction at the end.
Who's the catcher? You the catcher? Tried to do this without glasses. There's no vanity in my family, is there? It gives me great pleasure, a proclamation to recognize and commend Stafford Baseball League's Rookie U8U Team, the Heat, for winning the state championship. Whereas the Stafford Baseball League Rookie U8U Team was undefeated and won the district championship at their home field, Chittester Park, the Heat won the Virginia State Championship and were undefeated in the tournament. And the Heat represented Virginia in the regional championship in North Carolina against teams ranging from Virginia to Florida. And during the regular season play, the Heat won the Memorial Day Championship in undefeated play in Winchester, Virginia, and listen to this, with Dominic Dugan and Jackson Hamel setting a homerun record with 13 homeruns. You guys gotta raise your hands. Which two are they? Bryce Harper would be envious. Whereas their manager is Will Dugan, and coaches are Rick Prophet and Louis Vargas. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on the sixth day of October 2015 that it be, and hereby does recognize and commend the Stafford Baseball League Rookie U8U Team, the Heat, for an excellent job representing the Stafford Baseball League and Stafford County in the area, state, and region. Thank you, guys.
I just also wanted to say thanks. The Chittester Park is really a great park for these boys to play in. It's a long time coming. We play in Glen Allen, Richmond, and some of these other places in Williamsburg, and now everybody wants to play here. So, that's great. Great for these boys to defend their- Great for these boys to defend their champion, or to have a championship here, and we look forward to defending it next year with everybody here's support. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen, Stafford Heat. Thank you.
If you guys, you guys will pick up a pen. Everybody get a pen, coaches too. Thank you very much. I'll tell you, if everyone that came in this room was that friendly, this is a job I'd like to, I'd keep for life. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, that was a good experience. I know it was for me, and I'm sure it was for you as well. We're very proud of them. At this time, we'd like to do presentations by the public. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the board, you have three minutes to talk on any subject that you would like. We ask that when you come to the podium that you give your name and address. We also ask if it is an item on the public hearing agenda tonight, that you reserve your comments until that public hearing comes up. When you get to the podium, you'll see three lights on the right. Green light means go. Yellow light means you have about a minute left, and the red light means stop. I have two speaker cards. Don Maxineer.
I believe that's an agenda item.
Yes, you're correct. Thank you. And Buddy Seacor. And Mr. Seacor, the Ebenezer property is also an agenda item, but you said you had something general to talk about. So, please come on down.
Thank you, Buddy Seacor, 38 Sentinel Ridge, here in Stafford. I'm in the Acquahia District. Mr. Milde, thank you. I just wanted to come thank you again. I've done so in the past. I have no other agenda. For all the wonderful things that you all do, I know that in my past workings with the board, that you all are basically volunteers with a little bit of stipends. You work very hard, you do a fantastic job for the community and for the county. We have a fantastic county. I've now come in on about 20 years living here, and I think this is probably one of the best places I've ever lived. And no small part is because of you all. Here, about three years ago, I came up here and presented to you my three little minutes about how I had fallen dead for three minutes, and thank you all for the public services and the community, the Brook Fire Station that was able to respond and shock me back to life. And in no small part was the fact that you all helped support a fantastic 911 call center and all the services that we have in our county. So, thank you very much for that. That's the only thing I wanted to come up here and tell you today, is just thank you for your public service. You're doing a great job. Mr. Milde, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Seacor. I do remember, Mr. Seacor, you're coming up three years ago. I'm so glad to see that you're doing well. Anyone on my right, that's, I'm sorry? Correct. Anyone on my right like to address the board on any subject other than a public hearing subject? Please come on down. Yes, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Milton Breton. Live in 37 Bloomington Lane, Stafford, Virginia. Been here for about 19 years, well, actually 15 years. Got here in 99. Retired from the Navy, veteran, summer Marine Force, and love living here in Stafford. One of my concerns that I have is the increased residential development that we have, and one is specifically that's coming up, is the George Washington development of about 3,000 homes. I think probably that's a mistake. I think that we can do better based on the infrastructure that we presently have, and probably the infrastructure that we have in the near future probably wouldn't handle that additional burden, and that burden would probably come and will come onto the taxpayers themselves. We, as, living here in Stafford, one of the things that I enjoyed here was going through the school systems with my kids, living pretty close to Washington, D.C., and not being there, and moderately trafficked when I first got here. Now, it's increased to the point where on Saturdays, it's a burden to get from Bonswell Corner to the Giant that's off of 610. And if you've ever been in there in the summertime, you plan your Saturdays afterward. That means after 3:00, because you can't do it in the morning, because everybody's visiting, coming down on 95, and escapes onto Route 1. I think we can look at some of the things that we probably need to do is maybe start looking at from the infrastructure that we're starting to do, but development of the 3,000 homes at this particular time, without having the guidance of some of the overlays that's needed, it's probably a mistake. So, that being said, I got another minute, I think it's a mistake. One other thing that I'm looking at is, I know this has been something that's trying fucked, is the naming of the pool, the Acquahia Center. And that really truly bothers me, because the non-transparency of the fact that the naming is not what the public wants. And the people that I talk to, especially in the Griffiths-Widewater area, say that they just don't understand that why two Olympians that grew up together, went to the same Olympics, basically had the same criteria of notoriety throughout the world, cannot be named as something as simple as an Acquahia Center, that in our community. And I think that's something that we need to address. I think that's part of the process that's broken, and I think that we can do better. So, I know I got 13 seconds. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to talk. And we can do, and I enjoy being here at Stafford. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my right wants to address the board? Anyone on my right? Seeing not anyone on my left wants to address the board? Yes, sir.
My name is John McMath, 118 Castle Road, in the Rock Hill District. I think I'm in order here. I may not be, correct me if so, but I'd like to make a statement about the Stafford Village Center.
No, you're not, no, it's a public hearing. You have to wait till the public hearing.
I'm sorry.
And that's coming up here shortly. Anyone else on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Irma Clifton, and I live in beautiful downtown Falmouth. And I want to address the George Washington Village. I know that development is coming to Stafford. I said that in comments that I've made to you before. There's nothing we can do to hold it back. What we really need to do is to make sure that our infrastructure is in place before we approve these large developments. It just doesn't make sense to have all of these homes built and no roads to accommodate this. And I will tell you that, as you know, I live right in the middle of Falmouth, and the development that has been there at 17 and Route 1 is finished now. They said today, they did the last 30 minutes of development, planting grass, and they're coming back later on this month to do landscaping with trees. And so far, so good. But when you talk about a development that's 3,000 homes, don't put the horse before the cart. Make sure that there's money to develop these roads, and that the infrastructure is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else on my left like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickett Lane, Rock Hill District. Last time I was here, you didn't recognize me. So, I want to make sure you recognize me. I want you all to come out the week of October 26th. The NAACP is going to be holding debates for all the offices in the county. And I won't be wearing a suit. I am wearing a suit. So, Waldo is, it's Wildlife Analytics Leadership Diplomat Optimus, and then have a WSKI, that's Woodlands, Skill, Knowledge, and Imagination. Now, let me remind you what imagination is. Remember that guy named Einstein? It's more important than knowledge, for knowledge is limited to all we now know and understand. While imagination embraces the entire world, all there ever will be to know and understand. You know, I hear about the George Washington Village, and Grandma used to tell me, Paul, God's not making any more land, so be careful. We want treetops, not rooftops. And we don't want evergreen trees, we want oak trees, okay? Anyone can put up evergreen trees. I want to keep you up to date on the $7.6 million Mountain View Expansion Project. They put the lines out today. Unfortunately, we spent $7.6 million in the wrong part of Mountain View. It should have been done where the Kellogg-Mountain View interchange is. If you ever have to go home, like the people who have to go from the school, or my ENT doctor, you know, when they go that way, it's not the doctor, the doctor lives in Rock Hill, because I know, I think he signed something for me at one time. The other thing I want to pass on to citizens, you know, there's a legislative branch in Richmond. This board has failed again to present that two of our supervisors were in three-way elections. They do not have 51% of the vote, or 50% plus one, something we need to change. Like Jefferson said, you know, representative government is a good thing. Otherwise, you're going to wind up with sidewalks to nowhere that we have in this county. Just amazing, all the aspects of what's going on. I didn't see anyone except a delegate running at the public hearing last Tuesday about the diverging Diamond Interchange. For those of you who are not aware, Google that on Facebook, you'll see what the DDI is. It's a 21st century entity that will help us. Hope you find Waldo.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left like to address the board? Anyone in the chamber at all? Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the board. Reason we did not send that down is because our governor did not get a majority, we didn't think he's going to approve it. He had less than 50% of the vote, so I don't think, I think he probably vetoed anything we sent. I want to make sure everybody's clear on George Washington Village. The developer has pulled that back, because it had absolutely no support on this board. They will have to go back, rework it, and come back through the Planning Commission for another public hearing, and then come to the Board of Supervisors for a public hearing. They have not been to us yet with a public hearing, but when they realized that there was absolutely no support, they decided to pull it. So, I'm very concerned about it, as well as many of you are, and hopefully next year we'll see what they come back with. With that said, let's move into the public hearings. Item number 15, Planning and Zoning. Consider our reclassification request from R1 Suburban Residential to PT&amp;D Plan Traditional Neighborhood Development, Stafford Lakes Village. Mr. County, Madam County Attorney, I think we can do 15 and 16 together, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And 16, Planning and Zoning. Consider a conditional use permit to allow vehicle fuel sales within the HC Highway Corridor, Overlay Zoning District, Stafford Lakes Village. This is a continuation of the public hearing. I believe this is the third or the second. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. This is a third continuation of the public hearing, which started on September 1st for the Stafford Village Center project within the Garrisonville District. It entails both a reclassification of property as well as a conditional use permit. The applicant is Robert Pence of the Pence Group Incorporated, represented by Clark Lemming of Lemming &amp; Healy. The map before you depicts the property, which is 45 acres located on Garrisonville Road in the north Stafford area of the county. The issue that we have before us tonight, there's twofold. One, reclassification from R1 Suburban Residential, which allows one and a half houses per acre, to a PT&amp;D Plan Traditional Neighborhood Development Zoning District, which allows a mix of commercial office and residential uses. The second issue that we're considering tonight would be a deviation from the table of uses for the zoning ordinance, specifically for some modifications of one of the transect zones within the regulating plan. Those are two matters that deal with the zoning reclassification. The overall proposal has development up to half a million square feet of commercial or office floor area. There's also a proposal for 453 multifamily residential units within the project. This is the overall general development plan for the project. As we can see here, there'd be one primary entrance off of Garrisonville Road. There'd also be secondary access for a proposed gas station in this location, and access for service vehicles and potential interparcial connector to the west. As you can see from the diagram, there are a number of buildings that are being proposed with this project. Again, it's 45 acres in size, so you're going to have a significant number of retail, as well as mixed-use buildings within the project. The general development plan identifies specific buildings where there is the possibility for commercial and/or residential space, as well as standalone commercial space and one standalone multifamily building. The general development plan also identifies parking arrangements, proposed stormwater management facilities, and areas to be preserved on the property. The issue with the deviation is for allocation of the transect zone, as I mentioned previously, specifically the T6 transect zone, which has a permitted coverage area of 0 to 40%. The applicant is proposing 49.2%. In looking at the overall development scheme, staff and the Plan Commission have felt that this proposed deviation is appropriate based upon the development scheme for the property. The conditional use permit that's being proposed pertains to a gas station to be located in northeast corner of the property. This is an excerpt from the general development plan, which shows the gas station. In this particular case, we have the canopy in this location with a kiosk that could serve customers for the gas station. There would be no freestanding convenience store, this would be strictly a fueling station. With regard to this application, staff is generally supportive of the application. However, we have been in discussions and negotiations with the applicant on changing the proffers, and as you may notice in the Board of Supervisors report, the proffers are dated September 28th. They're currently not signed, so there are still some issues we would like to discuss further with the applicant. Specifically, in bringing to the board's attention and consideration is the general development plan. The current proffers allow for flexibility within the development plan, as well as the development plan itself identifies that many of the buildings can change use or possibly be relocated. The current code for the application of a PT&amp;D zoning district specifies that the development scheme must comply with the general development plan as applied for before the Board of Supervisors. So, basically, sort of locks the developer in. Again, these proffers that are being proposed in the concept plan gives flexibility to the developer, which in many regards is very logical, because it is such a large site, and with commercial development, you typically find buildings of different floor plates and sizes and dimensions, whether it's a big box retail, or a strip of commercial uses, or an individual commercial use like a restaurant. So, just staff wanted to make the board aware that the general development plan, though, is very informative, may not may not be the ultimate design of how the site will be configured. Also, staff has had some concerns and questions about the commercial phasing between the residential. We would prefer the applicant consider a chart that highlights specifically the square footage of the buildings of commercial space relative to the number of apartments that can be built. Also, we are suggesting to the applicant they consider the apartments be tied to a building permit rather than occupancy permit because the current phasing speaks to occupancy permits of the apartments relative to completion of commercial space. But it doesn't restrict building permits to being issued. So, there could be apartments built waiting on occupancy of the commercial space. And that could pose a concern for the county in the future. Also, just some clarification about the proffer regarding the turn lane on Garrisonville Road, that right turn lane would be along the entire frontage between both entrances. And that clarification be made with regard to a connection to High Point Boulevard. That's an existing public road at the south end of the property. The current proffers have some potential conflicts in the language that could be clarified with regard to the timing of the construction. Also, staff would recommend the applicant consider moving up the timing of when that road connection would be made relative to the commercial development. The Plan Commission, its recommendation was suggesting that the board approve the project. Again, the staff is supportive of the project and is requesting that this application be deferred to your next meeting to work out these details. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. This time, I will reopen the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Milde.
I'm sorry. You're familiar with the new phasing plan and the 100, and the units being, they are agreeing to put 100 units in the same building with some of the commercial buildout? Are you, you're up to speed on that?
Yes, sir.
Does your, do the recommendations that you are like, are requesting while in this deferral, will they address any of the timing issues or of the, when the apartments will get built relative to when the commercial, commercial buildings with apartments and then will get built?
And Mr. Milde, this is one of the things that we wanted to further clarify with the applicant. And again, the suggestion we had was maybe we have a chart that kind of better elaborates on what the phasing requirements are. Because right now, it's in text form and seems to be somewhat of interpretation, whereas a chart may be more clear.
Now, you say chart. You don't mean GDP, though. You mean a chart, like a-
Chart within the proffers, yes.
And I know we've gotten away from proffering GDPs, but is that, is it, tell me again why we wouldn't want to try to get, capture a generalized development plan for this project? Is it just because?
Mr. Milde, they do have a general development plan. They've proffered that certain features of the plan would be adhered to, but it does give some flexibility. So, buildings can move. The uses within the buildings could change.
Yeah, they all say either or. They, right, they pretty much say apartments or-
Many of them do, yes.
So, it's not really a generalized development plan if it just has a, not much of one. What kind of flexibility do they have within that GDP as far as where the buildings are located? Are they, is it at least that strictly, it would have to be strictly adhered to?
Well, the text within both the proffer and the plan allow for the buildings to be relocated. And as I mentioned before, with commercial development, typically, you're going to see the footprint of the building vary by the type of building. So, if they have, say, for instance, a number of restaurants that decide to locate here, then they want to be freestanding restaurants, that they will have a different building footprint than what's shown on the concept plan currently.
So-
Because the current, current concept plan has relatively large buildings that some of which are freestanding, some of which are connected to other buildings.
So, you're telling me, just so people listening are clear, because you're not looking at the picture, that the overhead view that shows the buildings, the text allows the buildings to move, perhaps some flexibility in their location. And the actual writing on this picture of overhead view on half the building says it can be apartments or commercial. So, between those two things, you really aren't, you're really not getting, you're not proffering much of a, of a design. I just want to make that point.
Yes, Mr. Milde. And again, I have a staff wanting to make the board aware of that because we've heard some commentary about another project in the county and the desire to have more certainty about the development.
And my understanding is that what, that the compromise has been reached since the last meeting on my concern, a couple of our concerns about really having a standalone apartment complex next to a retail center like we're getting at a Quiet Town Center. And by God, we're happy we're getting something there finally, but that is not what we agreed to. And that's certainly not how we designed PTND. What I'm told is that the first 344 units could basically be built freestanding, not integral with commercial in their buildings as long as the 300,000 square feet of a commercial was built. And that the very last 100 units would have to be, from 345 to 444, or something like that, would have, could, would have to be in buildings with retail or beneath them. Is that, is that, I'm understanding that correctly?
Yes, Mr. Milde. There's 100 units are proffered to be over retail. There could be more than 100 units, but that's the minimum. But there's no commitment to do more than 100 units over retail at this point in time. The proffers speak to a cap of 260 occupancy permits, up to 300,000 square feet. But it does not speak to the number of apartments being built ready to be occupied. So, that was one of the things that staff wanted to get clarified with the applicant.
Say that again to me. I just want to make sure I'm clear. Say that last sentence, please.
The proffers for the phasing of the residential speak to occupancy permits of the apartments rather than building permits.
Okay.
Again, that was something the staff wanted-
They speak to them in which way? You have to have an occupancy permit versus having a building permit?
Yes, the triggers for the commercial would be tied to occupant or vice versa. The triggers for the residential would be occupancy permit triggers.
So, they can build them and not occupy them?
Yes. And so, there's a construction phasing time, timing issue that we would have to consider.
No, that's interesting. Okay, now, now that's finally sunk in the third time around. Okay, thanks. That's good for now.
Ms. Sellers.
What other options do we have? Because when you talk about the GDP with the, they want to leave it open. I can understand why the developer wants to leave it open in case we have a tenant who comes in and says they want to do something different. I understand that. And if you, if they, if they proffer it, then they have to come back before the board for proffer amendment. So, I can understand that. What other options? Is there an administrative process that can be put in there? Where they, that way, if there's some questions as to the relocation of buildings, that at least staff can put their eyes on it? And I don't know. Maybe that's a question for Rashida. Well, I don't know. Is there anything we can do administratively?
Supervisor Sellers, it would be within the bounds of the ordinance that I have to find specific provisions. I know we do allow some technical modifications. I'm not sure if the layout change would be considered a technical modification. However, I would have to confer with Mr. Harvey's staff and get back with the board.
Because I can't speak for the developer, but I imagine they don't want to have to continue to come back for proffer amendments every single time if things change. And that could get costly. And we don't want to deal with that either. But so, that's something to think about between the two.
Any other questions? Mr. Thomas.
I guess I would disagree a little bit with Mr. Milde. In my four years, we've been pretty much requiring GDPs because when we vote on this, we like to know what we're voting on. And when we leave all these open-ended clauses and flexibilities, who knows what you're going to actually end up with? In this case, I think we have a pretty, pretty good developer with a good track record. However, it's not unreasonable for us to require GDP. And if they're not to the point where they've marketed enough buildings to really know what it's going to be, then maybe it's a little premature. So, I really would like to see a GDP just like we have on almost every other commercial property.
PTND doesn't have, doesn't typically proffer GDP. That's because the transect zones and the way it's spelled out in the ordinance is supposed to control. But I agree with you. But you don't see it in PTND.
Right.
And yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Like you, I'm worried about a couple of freestanding apartment buildings that don't really feel integrated into the commercial. And maybe there's enough protections into the PTND ordinance. I don't know. But that's just on my mind as you're kind of clarifying and negotiating things.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. And I'm going to Mr. Sterling.
I just want to call attention to these freestanding Stonebridge and Woodbridge, which people like with Wegmans, has all the apartments on one side and all the commercial on another. It's not integrated. And so, people love that. And people want to live there. And so, let's, let's not just say that these are going to be standalone apartments and we're not going to get anything else. We do have very successful ones that are nice that people go to. And I see a lot of Stafford folks up there, so.
Let me, let me remind everyone, this is a question, this is, this is question time, not discussion time. Mr. Sterling.
The phasing, I mean, I don't think anybody up here in the audience is going to be surprised. I'm not a fan of apartments and putting in more. I think it's been over, what, somewhere around 1,000 that have been approved in the last couple of years. Doing more is not something that I'm inclined to do, particularly unless I'm really certain that that commercial is along with it. And that largely goes to what Mr. Milde was talking about, commercial below the apartments, not freestanding. Go through it again with, or for me. What, when do they get to have how many apartments with how many square feet of commercial based on what they're currently proposing?
Mr. Chairman. The-
Yes.
-chart that Ms. Hollenberger just put at your place would probably be helpful.
It doesn't give me a timing. I've got the 100 number of standalone apartments can be occupied, zero commercial square footage. So, are you saying that 200,000 square feet of commercial has to be built before you can have 100 standalone apartments? I want to make sure I understand this chart.
Not, if you build less than 200,000 square feet, you can't occupy any apartments.
They get to your occupancy. Gotcha. So, 200,000 square feet of commercial right up front, then you can get to 100 occupancy or building. Have we ever done it based on occupancy permit before of an apartment for the commercial? I know we've got that strange thing with Colonial Forge, but that's creating problems.
This is fairly unique because we've never had a project that had apartments with commercial other than a Quiet Town Center.
And that was such a swimming success in terms of bringing it to-
We've had other projects that had single-family detached homes with commercial. And oftentimes, we saw in those cases, they had to go back and revisit the phasing because the residential project moved forward in advance of the commercial project because of, because of the various market conditions.
All right. So, then this, just to go through the chart to make sure, so 200,000, 299,000 before you can build 353, occupy 353, of which 260 can be standalone. 300,000 square foot before you can get to 353 total?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Romano.
I think it's important to point out that the 100 that are above commercial can be built at any time.
So, you can build 200 square feet of commercial? Oh, wait a minute.
So, they're exempted from the phasing?
Right.
How many commercial, how many square feet of commercial before you then could build 100? I don't know how much that would require on the first floor. Can I build 100 units over 20,000 square feet of commercial? Under our zoning, our ordinances, everything? Is that possible?
It depends on the size of the units that the developer is proposing. Say, for instance, if you have a 20,000 square foot footprint,
Yeah.
You'd have a 20,000 square foot second floor. If you had a, say, a 1,000 square foot apartment, you'd have to deduct some space for hallways and other things.
Elevator and everything.
So, say, for instance, you get 15 units on that floor, you'd have to go up.
Last I checked, we don't let people go up that high.
We wouldn't be able to go up that high based on the proffer. So, you'd probably have to have a bigger floor footprint than that. I'm not exactly sure.
Means you'd have more commercial. If you can just come back, because I thought I heard we're not going to get it. You have the whole, does the whole first floor have to be commercial? If you can come back, what that would look like for that part? Because that's an important point that Anthony raises. All right.
Mr. Thomas.
I'm just going to re-stress my importance of the integration of the commercial and apartments. And the reason is, if it wasn't for that, we shouldn't even be entertaining this because the comp plan clearly states the apartments are not supposed to be out here in the middle of this suburban area. If they're integrated, they're a different cost. They help pay for themselves. And then, that is the reason I am still listening to this application. So, if you can push on that and get real good language that tells us that we're going to have this integrated product, I think this application has a much better chance of passing.
Anyone else? Mr.?
This is, maybe Jeff can answer it. I'm thinking in my mind of mixed-use communities like the one you just mentioned in Woodbridge. And also Monument Place, which I reference a lot. The way that you have, you have all the, most apartments off to one side or potentially with them stacking one behind the other, I'm trying to think of a mixed-use community that lays out that way. And there may be one. I may not, I'm no expert on, technically, we probably know more than most people do about this stuff. But I'm just wanting to make sure that we're doing that feel that you look for in a town center. I don't see, I don't, there aren't apartments, for instance, behind, the ones that are close, right next to the Wegmans and stuff. Those are, you can, pretty much, they're laid out lengthwise and they kind of lay out along the edge. And Monument Place is the same way. There are, they don't, they're not going two and three-deep buildings in these mixed-use communities when they have separate apartments. Now, when they're integral, that's different. You can, you have businesses at the bottom, you have several buildings, you'll see that in a more suburban setting. But I, I'm just not sure, Jeff, do you have, my question is, is that a typical, you see, would you consider that mixed use when you have the apartments off to the side, two or three, you could have two or three buildings deep and all the retail off, kind of a mall off to the other side? It kind of looks to me more like an apartment complex next to a strip mall. Not being a smart aleck.
Mr. Milde, I can't think of a specific project, but I'd say in general, the idea of traditional neighborhood types of developments, that your multifamily buildings, whether it's freestanding or with commercial, would typically be used to frame the downtown area, either on the periphery or on the main street, because those buildings tend to be taller and form the edge of the community.
Is that what you're seeing in this plan?
In this plan, you'd see more so the taller buildings, potentially to the east on the project, where more lower-scale probably would be to the west. Again, it's not 100% clear because there are some property, buildings on the west that could be mixed use, where you could have...
Could be, because we're not, we haven't, and we're not sure, you're trying to pin that down on the chart?
Well, that's something we would maybe have to talk to the applicants more about, how definitive the GDP is going to be.
So you say, again, say it to me one more time, and in your mind, you are an expert, you are a bona fide expert in planning. You've got all this, every certification you can almost get. The mixed, a mixed-use community would typically have the taller buildings. To say that to us, how would you imagine it?
The taller buildings would typically frame the community, whether it's focusing on a downtown main street or the perimeter of the community with lower buildings in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cavalier?
Now, the original proffers that came in did not have this minimum 100-unit commercial apartments up to 353, right? That, that's a change from the last time. Is that not correct?
Correct, Mr. Cavalier. It's part of the ongoing discussion.
Right. The only thing is that there's some question about perhaps phasing here and the timing. But I agree with Mr. Thomas in that that, to me, was one of the most important parts of this particular development, that we would have apartments above the commercial retail because that, that's what we didn't get in a quiet town center. And I think some people are disappointed because of that. But in this case, the developer has agreed to do this concept. And I think that's really going to be the first time we've ever done this in Stafford County. And it, I think it's going to be a very nice development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Does the applicant have anything to say this evening? Mr. Lemming?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Clark Lemming on behalf of the applicant. We've heard your questions, and I think what a lot of this comes down to are two factors. One, the commercial developer, primarily commercial developer, seeking to retain as much flexibility as possible with the build-out. When Stafford Marketplace was built, there were no proffers on it. There were no residential units. And I realize that adds another dimension to all of this. There are a couple of ways to deal with the issues that I, the issue, main issue that I hear you articulate. And as number one, you don't want another quiet town center. And I'm somewhat responsible for that, but we got what we got. Second point, second point is that, is this business a proffer in the GDP? And I recognize fully why that's now in the ordinance. But I would point out, particularly in response to something Mr. Thomas mentioned, I've never done a commercial rezoning, a B2 commercial rezoning where I proffer the GDP. You just don't do that. You don't tie the developers' hands. Now, this is a little different because it's, because it's mixed use and because you're reacting to the previous development and not wanting to see that kind of thing happen. Now, how do you address that? We've done two things here. What we've done throughout the process is to phase it so that you don't have the number-one scenario that could have evolved elsewhere, and that is all the residential coming before the commercial. So here, you get a substantial chunk of commercial before any freestanding residential is possible. Now, Mr. Sterling mentioned, well, how much residential can we get of this over the commercial apartments? You know, they'd like to have a free hand to do any of it. But that gets to the second question that you will have raised, and that is this integration issue. So the compromise and the things that we've proposed is, okay, we can do those anytime. You know, if we're going to give you what we understand you want, which is the integration here, we can do those residential over commercial buildings at any point. They're not tied to the phasing. And then the question came up, and this came up in the context of meetings with Mr. Cavalier and Ms. Sellers, well, how do we know we're going to get any of these? And that's what led to the proffer that Mr. Cavalier has referenced. So what we're trying to do is to walk the line, we understand what the concern is and what you don't want to happen again, walk the line between the flexibility that a, that any commercial developer is going to need. We're talking about 500,000 square feet of commercial here, trying to walk the line that and address your concerns to assure that you are going to get something different here that is going to contain the integration that you're, that you're looking for without tying the developers' hands. So that's what I think all of this is about. And we're more than happy to continue to talk with you about that, but those are the points. And we've worked with Ms. Sellers and Mr. Cavalier, and to some extent with Mr. Milde, about these issues and trying to come up with something that everybody can live with. As I think somebody said, you've got a very reputable developer here who does what he says he's going to do. You know, by the same token, he's, somebody said, go out and get commercial, Mr. Thomas, you said, go out and get more commercial leases and, you know, take another look at it. But that doesn't happen that way. If you don't get the zoning, if you don't have the zoning, you're not in a position to negotiate commercial leases. They can't do that right now. The zoning is the horse there, not the cart. So we're happy to continue to talk about these issues. We're also asking for the deferral incidentally because we have some things we need to be assured of. I mean, the county's engaged in a road project, as all of you know, on 610. There's a large commercial stormwater pond that is to be situated under the county's plans on the northwest corner of the property. Well, that's right in the middle of the commercial development. We need the ability, and I think everybody's willing to do this, we need the ability to take that pond and move it to the back of the property, not interfere with the county's plans. So that project moves forward and get that area back, because that's prime commercial. That's where, that's where the commercial over, I mean, the apartments over retail buildings are situated, where that pond would be. So with that, we're happy to work with any of you. You know, we struggled a little bit trying to get the consensus here, and the things that we've done have been directly responsive to what we've heard you saying and trying to give you a product that makes sense, but still preserves a degree of flexibility that's necessary for a commercial development of this size. So that, we will, I talked to Mr. Dayton about getting together this week and continuing our discussion on all of these issues. And of course, we're happy to talk with any of you through that process, too. Mr. Pence, do you want to add anything? Okay.
Any questions? I remind you, by this is question time. I think Mr. Milde is first, I'll go to Mr. Thomas.
You said 500,000 square feet. There's no guarantee, just to be clear, there's no guarantee. You only need, let's, okay, let's, there's no guarantee that you wouldn't have to build more to get your maximum amount of apartments, 300,000 feet is the key, right? Is the trigger?
Well, you get 354. You get 354 apartments.
Right, but you could build the other 100 at any time, as long as you build them over, as long as they're built over commercial?
Yeah, I mean, technically, mathematically, you're correct. If, I don't know whether you're saying that they would simply stop after 300,000 square feet, or?
Well, if you couldn't, you just got finished explaining to us the economics of leasing buildings, and you can't lease them unless you have the zoning, which also means, I'm sure you won't build them unless you have the tenants. So if there's no demand for more than 300,000 square feet, you aren't likely to build it, correct?
Well, I'm not sure I'm the best person to answer that.
I think it's just anyone can answer that. Of course you won't build it if you don't have someone to occupy it, because you don't need to. Yeah, well, even if it's owner-financed.
Nobody has a crystal ball with regards to the market.
It's not a trick question. I mean, we do, right, you're not going to build it if you can't, can't lease it, right? So you don't, but the apartments, who I think everyone knows, recognizes that apartments are pretty valuable right now. Right now, apartments are hot, they're happening all over the place. That's my, I'm in the business of apartments. So I can promise you, there's never been a market for apartments like there is now. So in my estimation, you are, you're one of the, your favorite things about this project, if you're the owner, is getting the apartments. This is the largest application for apartments I've ever seen in 10 years, just for what it's worth. And I, may I, I voted for two apartment complexes in the 200s in this county, and one that I don't count because it was for federal law enforcement housing only, in 10 years. So I, I'm not saying I'm against this. I think you already know that I'm actually, I'm warm to it and I want to discuss it and work through the details. But it's huge that you're asking for 450 apartments. I mean, that's just a big deal. That is a big deal. So what do you, what do you say about the idea of a town center of a, of what you might see at Shirlington, for instance, where you have the commercial in the center and you have the higher buildings around the peripheral? Kind of like Jeff was describing. Do you have any kind of?
Well, I think, I think anything is possible, but there's got to be the market for it and there's got to be the flexibility to put together the pieces of it. There have been some preliminary discussions with some prospective tenants. Mr. Pence has shared some of those with you. So at this point, we know some things that are likely to come. You know, we've got to orient, the construction has got to orient to those things that we're relatively sure about. And they're, they're good things.
You're, you're an, you also are definitely an expert in this area. Traditional neighborhood development is the name of the zoning you are requesting, right?
Yes.
What does that mean to you, traditional neighborhood development? What look do you think that would typically describe?
Yeah, I think, I think it's fair to say that, number one, what you're talking about is a zoning ordinance. And, and I was here, of course, when the zoning ordinance was developed. And I don't think there's any question that this was to be a different approach. We already had planned development districts, and the TND zoning district is intended, I think, to achieve an older, perhaps more familiar approach to metropolitan living, which would feature a mix of residential and commercial uses. The ordinance, however, is very flexible. The integration that you're, there's the letter of the ordinance, the integration that you're asking for here and that we have adjusted some proffers to try to accommodate for, that's not required by your ordinance. That may be the spirit of the ordinance. But we have an ordinance on paper. And we've now had in my, by my count, one, two, three, four, this would be the fifth, I believe, TND application that's come in on this. I'm sure there are all kinds of different motivations, and you've seen all kinds of different products. Some with the residential and the commercial completely segregated. Here's the, here's the commercial, here's the residential, but still under your TND ordinance. So I understand your point, and TND is supposed to, the purpose, as I understood it, of the TND ordinance was to provide the developer with a whole lot of flexibility in putting together a mixed-use development. And it does that. Of course, now that you, now that the GDP must be proffered, that takes a degree of that away. And so you get the reaction here, which is to try to build that flexibility into the GDP so the commercial developer can still do what they need to do to bring in the tenants. So that's, that's what you're seeing here.
Well, I think, I think, I think, first of all, this is not a public hearing on the TND ordinance. So let's, let's stick to the subject and make sure we are forming this question. Yes, sir.
I just asked a question. I was, I can't, you've noticed, because you and I work together on the TND ordinance. And so we're learning at a quiet town center that the apartments, they didn't like it, but they had to build their apartments around their parking. And so what you ended up with is a lot of residential, it forces the residential closer to the, to the commercial. You, when you put a sea of parking in between, someone just texted me, oh, they said an example of TND, a mixed-use would be Central Park. Of course it isn't, because you can't walk from the apartments there. And so is there, is there, would you, would you consider, and I'm not asking for really for an answer, it's rhetorical, but in the next, in this next delay, would you ever consider looking at a way to get those apartments, that the residential's closer to the commercial without, with less parking between it, which I thought was ingrained in our TND ordinance, and maybe spreading those out a little bit? I'm trying to make it walkable. I know for sure that we, you and I worked on TND and I thought we were trying to make things walkable.
I think walkability, pedestrian-friendly are some of the basic principles of TND.
And I mean a shed within, we use a measurement of time it takes to walk, a three-to-five-minute walk shed. That is what walkable means. There's actually a definition.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
And we had to put that together, you know, for the, for the application.
Mr. Thomas?
About 500,000 square foot of commercial hopefully is realized. Are you telling me that you haven't reached out to one potential leasy for that?
I'm not going to get into the Pence's business, but no, they've reached out to many potential tenants.
So my suggestion that they reach out to a couple more, and you said that's simply not how it's done. I'm trying to understand.
I understood, understood you to say we need to nail down these tenants.
I said nothing about leases. You said that. That wasn't my words.
Well, we're...
This is how it's done. So you could potentially reach out to more and have a much better idea of the commercial buildings that you're coming forward with.
Well, you're, you're getting into the Pence's end of things now.
I'm getting into what you said, which is that's not how it's done, and...
Well, let's let, let's let Mr. Pence know that, because he knows more about that than neither of us.
I sure hope so. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. I've lost my voice again, sorry. I'll try and answer a couple of the questions about this, if I may. First, I believe Mr. Sterling talked about building space you can occupy, and I agree with that. But there is a notion about how it's done, and it's Stafford Marketplace, which is 800,000 feet plus 72,000 feet of office. We started with three things down there, a Target, a Kohl's, and a Bob Evans. Everything else proceeded sequentially as we secured tenants. Major tenants are not going to sign a lease without having a piece of property zoned. They're not going to do it. We've gone, I've gone through it many places around the country. We went through it in Loudoun County at the Potomac Run Shopping Center, which ended up being Target and the Target Stores, not a Target Target. And many others. That's about 434,000 feet. You, I assure you, I should, excuse me, I assure the whole board here, that we and our brokers are talking to every conceivable occupant about this project. I've done 35 of them in my life. I've never given one back to a lender. Oh, we did have one other thing, by the way, at Stafford Marketplace. I went to a bank and I signed a construction note for $32 million. It puts just about everything I worked for for 40-some years on the line because I believed in it. And the banks don't do that without a plan about how we're going to get there. I'm not going to start now, having just turned a big 7-0, but I have a great team here. Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, as all of us would say. So I assure you that we are out, and with every possible tenant who's not on the market, some people who might not otherwise be here, I think there's going to be a real surprise or two here. But one thing I would say reputable developers don't do, or serious ones don't do, is go bandy about names of tenants before you have a commitment. I won't do it. Other people might do it. The tenants don't like it. That's probably a killer. With respect to the question of, of the interconnectivity, I think, Mr. Milde, you addressed this. We actually, this afternoon, on the way here from Reston, we took a loop down 29 through Gainesville and whatnot. And there is a project, not as big as this, probably half the size of this down there. It's a Harris teater, has apartments off the side, has offices and retail on the front, has some freestanding buildings, has a beautiful bridge over a long stormwater pond going in. It's a beautiful project. That would be not exactly the design of this, but that is, it's on Route 29 just below the Wegmans in Gainesville. It's about two miles south, if, there. It's a lovely project. I invite you to go look at it. I wouldn't build, we wouldn't build a residential that way, but there is a mixed-use building in the front with offices and residential. The, one of the keys, and why we have to have some degree of flexibility, is because when, when we go to build a retail store, if we have, and when we have, excuse me, residential above it, we need to know when we start the commercial that we can occupy the residential. There's, there's a lot of thought that's gone into these proffers. We've been working with the staff diligently, I think, for the better part of a year now, between this body and the, and the Planning Commission. Certainly at some point in time, and I've said before, we will come back for something because something will change, because change is the inevitable. I hope it's not too much. But there is an aspect of this, Mr. Milde, on the right side of the plan, we talk about walkability. And I've said before, where my home, and I love walkability, that the five minutes you can walk from one end of this to the other, and one reason, I might survive 70 years, is about four miles a day walking. It's very, very walkable. And on the right side, where there are two large drawn-in retail stores, which have, even if the buildings in front of them were to be only apartments, there's tremendous, I'm sorry, I've got something here right, flying right in front of me, this, pardon me. There's tremendous walkability over there. It's our desire to have ground-floor retail and apartments above. But, Mr. Thomas, I hope you would agree, when we get to the point where we have our tenants and they're ready to go, when you sign a lease with them, the real estate people work because the operations people say, go get a store in Stafford County, and they get the store. And then we're ready to go, and then all of a sudden, well, we can't build that building because we don't have apartments above it, or we're building another apartment on top of another commercial building. And it says, wait a minute, you've got to get the first one up and occupied before you can start the second one. So aside from the interconnectivity of the walking, there's an interconnectivity in how these financial transactions go together. That's our job and I, and I, I, that's what we get from experience. And I hope you can understand that, and I hope I've answered those three questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pence.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Milde?
Mr. Pence?
Oh, I'm sorry. One more.
So...
I beg your pardon, Mr. Sterling.
I don't want to be, it's me, I don't want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't want to micromanage your, I hate it when I watch people doing that before I got on the board from this podium and Planning Commission. I'm just curious, wouldn't you like if you could make it work? Wouldn't it look good to have the, or the town, the town center look that I keep trying to describe, to have that mixed-use kind of in the center of the project? And I would imagine if you built this, is there, if you were to build your apartments first, it looks like you're setting it, setting it up so that you're going to build the apartments freestanding and the commercial first and apartments freestanding with the waiting until you have a market for the last 100 apartments before you have to build the mixed, mixed-use of retail with apartments above. But wouldn't, if you had a market for all of it, wouldn't you prefer to have that low-level retail with apartments above kind of towards the center of the project?
It depends on who the anchor tenant is. If it's an anchor tenant like we'd like to have here, they require a lot of parking right in front. And people don't go to large stores like this and park 500 feet away and have to walk around three buildings.
Okay, let's go ahead and stipulate.
Nobody here does that.
Let's stipulate your layout.
Okay.
But we haven't gotten to the point where we know where you're going to put the mixed-use building, buildings, 100 units. Would, even if it were on the edge, I can, I can picture the layout in the center, so your retail's off to your left, looking down like, like this. If you come to the center, wouldn't it be better to have, if it worked for you financially, if you could sell it, rent it, wouldn't it be better to have the apartment, the mixed-use in the center and then have kind of a retail off to one side and the pure apartments off to the other? So that your mixed-use, again, I'm just, I think of, now I'm thinking of Shirlington as an example of something kind of like that. But also, there's a lot of, it's really an old-town look. It's, it's any, any place that has apartments around retail.
Well, I, I said before, I live, I have a Reston Town Center.
Yeah, and Reston Town Center is an example. Thank you.
I built a center there in 1977, and nothing that's there now, nobody had a dream about that before. I would make a comment about Shirlington. I think Shirlington's probably had at least four lives in the time that I've been doing business. Lots of failures because of the layout and no insufficient parking and the insufficient nucleus of residents in the area. I, I understand why I'm like, today you might say, well, why doesn't it look like Shirlington? And the answer with respect to Shirlington, and the difference between Shirlington and Reston and some other places in here is that this is Stafford County. Sherlington and Reston and some other places in here is that this is Stafford County. You don't have the same nucleus of people to support the basic structure to allow. And by the way, they go up now 22 and 29 stories in Reston are going up right now. I would like to address, if I may, sir, one other thing. You alluded to, I forget exactly how you said it, ideal or possibly buildings that are going to be, that in our mind are going to be purely residential. There is no, there's only one building in this project that if it is built, that we envision, that I envision, is going to be purely residential. And that's been on the table since we started. I envision that all the others, with the exception of some restaurants up front, which you're not going to have, obviously, at least over one of them, and the gas station, if we build a gas station that would have residential over. It's not my desire to go out and build a freestanding apartment building here. It is to build, I'm a commercial developer first, and this project, we branched out into other things. We have some hotels now in Northern Virginia. And so we really want to do this. And I said this at Planning Commission, I don't think I've said it here. When we started Stafford Marketplace, we had a, it was an open, it was a piece of property with no proffers. And we made it what it was without anyone asking to do whatever, bricks or enclosures or anything else. This place is going to be as Stafford Marketplace plus some factor, 2X or 3X. It's going to be, it's going to be much nicer and it's going to have much more amenities. And the kind of amenities that can be put here now couldn't have been put in Stafford Marketplace when we started that in 2001, 2002, because the market's completely different. And a lot of people will come here now that wouldn't come here then. But to go back to the other, to put the residential down the middle, there's not sufficient parking for the.
I wasn't telling you should. I was just curious if you thought.
That's the best answer I can give.
But I do like what you just said. If you would memorialize that you would only want one building to be purely residential, which I know we talked about in the last meeting, that is definitely something that would, I would look, I would think would be a plus.
I think, Mr. Millie, he's got your message.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to move on with the public hearing unless someone else has a question. Mr. Thomas.
Just a quick comment. I think we'll be in a world of trouble. We're giving you a lot of hard questions, but we'd be in a lot of trouble if every developer came in front of us and had the vision that you have and the track record to go with it. So I just wanted to compliment you on your open, honest, and sharing all that with us. So maybe Clark should let you talk more. I don't know. Nothing against the attorney.
Only if he turns the meter off.
Thank you very much, sir. We're going to open the public hearing. Remind everyone.
Thank you all. Thank you particularly, Mr. Thomas.
We're going to open the public hearing. I'll remind everyone that you have three minutes. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. Green light means go. Yellow light means one minute. Red light means stop. I do have one speaker card, Buddy Seacor. Is Mr. Seacor still here? Yes, come on down, Mr. Seacor.
Thank you. I thought I wore out my three minutes already. Basically, I came here, again Buddy Seacor, 38 Sentinel Ridge in the Acquahia District. I'm here to support Ebenezer United Methodist Church. It's a fantastic church. If you don't have a church home, please consider that. Try to get that plug in. But we have a fantastic leadership. We have a fantastic mission. And if you could help us out in your votes tonight for that cause, for that mission, we'd certainly appreciate it. Again, thank you all for what you do. I just want to drive that home one more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seacor. I would like to ask Mr. McMath to come up since he came up earlier and was at the microphone. I asked him to sit back down. So once Mr. McMath finishes, we'll move to the right and then we'll move to the left.
My name is John McMath. I live at 8 Kesswick Road in the Rock Hill District. And I would like to make a statement about Stafford Village Center. I am probably speaking as a voice of the wilderness here, but I don't understand how anyone could possibly refer to this project as a traditional neighborhood. A quick look at the project GDP reveals right away that it would be more accurate to call it a traditional shopping center. The main feature that jumps out at you is space for parking. The next is commercial retail. A true TND would probably make sense at this site. By that, I mean a self-sustaining pedestrian-scale community where the commercial component is designed to serve those who live and work there, not an expanded outside market, and which requires a minimum use of the private auto by residents to meet daily needs. The primary purpose of this design, on the contrary, is obviously to attract and accommodate traffic from outside the community to support the disproportionate retail development. I'm not alone in this observation. The county staff, summary on page seven, says, I'm quoting, "The proposed layout is reflective of a suburban shopping center. This concept does not fit in with the original intent of the PTND, which in part is to promote pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. Staff suggested the applicant consider a site layout more reflective of the TND. I couldn't have said it better. Do we really need another shopping center development and yet another gas station for an already highly congested area destined to become even more so with the residential development that is being approved by the county? What are the implications of that? County staff reports that the TIA for this project calculates a high-traffic generation of over 25,000 vehicles per day and over 1,000 AM and 2,400 PM peak trips per hour. That latter number represents 40 vehicles per minute. That's a car, truck going by every one and a half seconds. So what does that mean? It means, as noted by the planning staff, that quote, "At the year 2025 buildout, the project would cause the LOS of several of the intersections to fail with an LOS of E, or if already projected to be failing without the project, the intersection would further degrade to increased delay times." Why do this? What's the purpose? Why approve a project that will only add to the negative impacts that are bound to follow more dense population growth that relies on individual use of cars and trucks? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on my right-hand side care to address the board on this? Seeing none, I'll move to the left. Anyone on my left-hand side care to address the board? Pastor, come on down.
Thank you, Mark Miller, 129 Riggs Road. I stand on behalf of Ebenezer Church. Some of our congregation is here. If y'all want to stand for a second. I'm so proud of our congregation for continuing to come out and express support for this project. We do hope you'll consider it favorably, and we understand there's things that have to be worked out. But we think this is good for the county. We think it'll provide not only tax revenue and jobs, but even more affordable housing. And we are encouraged to work with the Pence Group, and we think they're a fine group to work with, and we hope you'll consider that favorably. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on my left?
Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane. Must be nice to not have to run against anyone in four weeks. Congratulations. Hey, I gotta, gotta get my plugs in, you know what I mean? All right, let's start with the Gainesville analogy, okay? Number one, Route 29 is not 610. Pretty poor example. Like my grandmother said, you know, "Once upon a time, you know, you were the future." So what you did, you know, 34 projects ago, that was "once upon a time." Millennials are all about apartments. That's what's going on throughout the country. But I really liked the first speaker. This is not a TND. And this is not in the right place and the right time. And just because God gave you some land doesn't mean that you need to go paving it over. Also, this is not Woodbridge or Fredericksburg. So using analogies that are not even close to the demographics or the geographic aspects of this is all by itself. People forget that proffers were allowed by the Commonwealth in 1989 predominantly for cash. They weren't for GDPs. Deviations from county code is a bad precedent. You, taking something that's 40% and you're going to do it 49% is not the way the land is supposed to be used, especially when you're going to put another gas station that's not even a Wawa or holy sheets. You know, you've got one of those coming down from this road. The traffic impact analysis is atrocious. You're in, you're not even in D level when this all gets built out. Stormwater management has always been a concern. If you didn't see where Joaquin gained, you all forget about Hurricane Fran and Hurricane Isabel. So those are key aspects that people just are not aware of. And you keep on reverting back to the Acquahia Town Center. Well, once upon a time, you tried to build the Acquahia Town Center and you chased away James Way and the Scholarship and all those businesses. And I have an apartment. It was Phase 23 and 24. And I've got commercial property. It's called Arby's Sands, the Chinese restaurant. I can even go to Dan's Pharmacy. And I got a medical appointment tomorrow. No, Thursday, 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber would like to address the board? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tyler Underwood, Lorenzo Drive in the Georgia-Washington District. I have to say, Mr. Millie, I absolutely agree with you. We ended up with a apartment complex next to a strip mall at Acquahia Town Center. We definitely agree with that. I have to say that compared to the Acquahia Town Center, these are two completely different projects in the fact that we have a competent and able developer for once. Unlike Ramko Gershenson, who didn't own a single mixed-use development, hadn't developed a single mixed-use development, and as far as I can tell from their property holdings, actually didn't ever completely build a commercial development. They only have expanded commercial developments. So from that perspective, it's completely different. We have a competent developer here, and I think for once, that's actually a great thing. Unfortunately, I do have a significant concern with this development, and it has to do with the paradigm of how we look at physical impact analysis. I have physical impact analysis here from Shelton Woods, Shelton Knolls, Liberty Knolls II, and Winding Creek, which of course wasn't approved, but the physical analysis wasn't called into question. One thing that all of these analyses have in common is they account for off-site tax generation by onsite residential units to offset onsite costs. Now, what does that mean? They basically are accounting for the commercial development that is supported by the residential units. And you can look through all of these. They all account for both tax, revenue, meals tax, so forth, and even real estate tax from the commercial developments. The issue we have here is this development looks to count onsite tax generation by off-site residential units to offset onsite costs. So we end up here as a double counting of the exact same tax generation. This is a significant issue, and it's a decision this board needs to make as to the paradigm you're going to allow projects to come in under. All of these have, all of these projects that I've mentioned justified their impact to the county using off-site commercial tax generation. This project looks to use that onsite tax generation to buy off-site residential to offset its impacts. Furthermore, if you look at page 32 of Attachment 10, they look to, they list sales tax on the, from the onsite residential as a positive. Then if you turn over to page 34, they also count sales tax from the commercial. Now, in theory, if this is a true mixed-use development, then those onsite residential units are spending their tax dollars onsite at the commercial. So you have it counted both on page 32 and on page 34. This is just an issue with the very way that we look at how we offset costs to the county. One of the things that we've always in all counties looked to do is off-site or offset residential costs through commercial. That's one of the great challenges that Stafford's had for many, many years is until Stafford Marketplace, we really didn't have a true strong commercial base here in Stafford. So I think it's something that needs to be taken under serious consideration, who gets to count the tax generation by the commercial supported by the residential.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Jo Knight, and I live at 103 Nautical Cove. I have been listening tonight across the street and decided I should come over and give some thoughts from maybe the senior generation. We have had one speak, but I have, over time, developed a little different view of these communities. I think I used to think very independent about every, I still think that way. But you know, to live in a community where you can walk and you can shop and eat out, downtown Fredericksburg is so desirable to me anymore. That thought is just wonderful. You don't have to get in your car and drive to do these odds and ends. And of course, that does help reduce traffic on Garrisonville Road and other areas. This property backs up to a huge area of homes where they're going to be able to come through in the back and not even go on Route 610. I hear many folks say they don't even want to go on Garrisonville Road now because of the traffic and the confusion with traffic there. I look so forward to this type of community happening more often. And that's what I think we've been focused on with our comp plan in different areas. This was part of it, to have these things where we can do them in areas that are close-in and convenient. And I love this idea of a walkable community, to be able to walk to the movies, to walk to the gym, to walk out to eat, to shop. And the older I get, the more I like it. They might try to take my driver's license away one day. I don't know. They are going to keep me pinned down anyway. I just wanted to share that with you. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the chamber like to address this issue? Seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Does the applicant have rebuttal? And I think, Mr. Sterling asked if he could ask one more question, and I've allowed him to do that. So Mr. Sterling does have a question for you.
I don't know if you or Jeff are going to be the appropriate source for answering this, and you may not have the data available right now, but if I can get it. The whole issue of the level of service at the interchange or the intersection, that is a source of concern. Do you have, when you look at the traffic, do you have what makes up significant portions of that, or it divided into different things? Because I know there's gas station there, and gas stations do create quite a bit of traffic, you know, ins and outs. Yes, within the traffic. Whatever it is that we might be able to tailor it to reduce that impact on the level of service.
We're happy to look at the traffic impact study. Does break those things down.
Okay. Please, with member on the board that you're discussing that with as well, and see to what extent you can mitigate the impact on the level of service by adjusting that.
Just briefly in the way of comments with regard to the fiscal analysis, it'd be great if the county adopted a particular model and everybody came in and followed the same model, but that hasn't happened. Other counties do utilize models. The one that Dr. Bellis uses is endorsed by Stephen Fuller, who you all have used for a number of things. And he has reiterated that model several times here in Stafford. He's worked with the Commission of Revenue about that. He has applied that model a number of, on a number of occasions in Spotsylvania County, too. So it speaks for itself, and the model has stood the test of time, and he continues to reiterate the same model without any substantial criticism from staff or either of the counties where he's been utilizing it. In fact, Spotsylvania County actually adopted a number of the aspects of his model and changed their model because he did some things that they weren't doing, captured some revenue that he had not captured. One good thing, one important thing to remember about this application is, I'm sure you all appreciate, we don't come to you cold. By the time these applications get to you, they have been vetted environmentally. Some of you will recall all of the approvals that have been obtained here. Recall, most of the time historically, those things occur after zonings, but not in this case because they were so critical. VDOT has looked at this any number of different ways, a couple of iterations of our TIA, your own planning staff. own planning staff, your planning commission. So, there has been a lot of light shown on this particular application and every aspect of the application. And we're perfectly willing to continue to discuss the issues that you have raised this evening, but we think we've gone a long, long way toward addressing the issues with this, with this project and make it something that will be good for the county, good for the church, and good for the developer, too.
Thank you, Mr. Limming.
Yes, sir.
Now, close the public hearing and bring it back.
Question on that.
Sorry, I have one more question.
I don't, I don't think anybody was challenging Dr. Bellis' model where he uses per capita spending. I think it's better than no approach. I would like to have just a minor comment from him, just to see if he had, when he was calculating the revenue on both pages.
Sure.
The 400, which I guess would be 650 people in the apartments, just if he kind of took that into consideration, because I did think that was a pretty valid point.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Limming. Bring it back to the board, Ms. Sellers, Garrisonville District.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask for a deferral on this vote for, well, the main reason is because we're, we're actively in negotiations with the church on some property for the 610 widening, so we need to finish that, and then we can bring it back to the board and discuss some of the other things. So, I'd like to make the motion to defer this to the next meeting.
To the next meeting? I have a motion in the second. County Attorney, do we need two motions?
No, Mr. Chairman. You can act on it altogether.
Okay, good. I have a motion in the second. They're having a discussion. Stand and cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes 7-0 for deferral until our October 20th meeting. Item number 17, planning and zoning, amend proffered conditions on 21 acres to allow design change, North Stafford Office Complex, Rock Hill District. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could have the computer, please.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, just wondering if we can call 17 and 18 up together, so they're companion.
Okay. We'll also do 18 at the same time, planning and zoning authorize a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through facility within the Highway Quarter Overlay District, North Stafford Office Park, Rock Hill District. Now, Mr. Harvey.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two applications, as previously mentioned, for reclassification, which is amending proffers on B2 urban commercial zone property, as well as a conditional use permit for a drive-through. The properties affected are parcels 1931A and 31D. The overall area for the conditional use permit is 4.44 acres compared to the overall 21 acres of the site. The applicant is Chris Hornung on behalf of Fern 610 LLC. This location map shows the parcel highlighted in red. Again, it's zone B2 urban commercial. We have a variety of commercial and office uses in the nearby areas, as well as residential and agricultural uses in the vicinity. This is the site of the conditional use permit relative to the overall site. And this is the aerial photo of the existing conditions. I will note that this parcel here currently has a Sheetz gas station, which is under construction. The proffer amendment mainly focuses on the location of an existing proffered park location within the project, as well as dealing with issues related to fire sprinklers within the buildings. The, the park that was proposed is 10,000 square feet, and that's a carryover from
I know.
An initial concept for the development, which is primarily an office park. That's, office uses can still be located here, but we are seeing now.
Where the people who still smoke can go smoke, basically.
Could be, or.
I mean, that's.
Where people visiting the area can, can walk their dogs there, whatever. There's a lot, lot of different opportunities there. So, it, one of the main changes is for the proffers, it deals with the location of the park. As you can see, this is the existing location, and this is the proposed location. The proposed location moves the, the park closer to the Sheetz gas station and is a little bit more centrally located than the current location. Also, there's some.
Will it still be the same sprawling 10,000 square feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there are some adjustments to the, the location of travel lanes or within the project. There's also a proffer change with regard to sprinklers, as I mentioned, that extends sprinklers to additional buildings within the site. With regard to the evaluation criteria, staff notes that the proposal is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, which recommends this area as a commercial node within a suburban area, so it's supposed to be commercial activities that would serve the nearby community. The, we don't see any specific negative issues with the proffer amendment, and we're recommending approval pursuant to ordinance 01532. The planning commission also has recommended approval of the proffer amendment. With regard to the conditional use permit, this is the general development plan affecting the grocery store with a drive-through. In particular, this is the location of the drive-through on the site. As you can see, there's two drive-through lanes, one of which would be for a window at the building, and then another one could be accommodating for dropping off your prescriptions.
Okay. Yeah, before you go through it, you know, we'll interrupt. When I'm looking at proposed parcel 4.44 acres, does that include that parking that is there in front?
Yes, sir.
Or is it just a pad site? So, that's the pad site we're looking at is roughly what?
So, this is the area that.
That's 4.4 acres, so you're talking about an acre pad site? Maybe an acre and a half?
The building footprint is almost an acre in size. It's a little over 41.
Footprint is?
Almost 42,000 square feet.
Oh, there it is, right there. Okay.
Yes.
Now, I'll be honest, I'm just not familiar with grocery stores that have drive-throughs. So, can you, or if you can't, we'll have the applicant do it, just give me an example of a grocery store with a drive-through.
Giant.
Giant has a gro, a drive-through?
For the pharmacy.
Wow, okay.
It's very convenient.
Not the Giants I go to.
I do the shopping.
I do all the shopping, but I go to Wegmans, so.
Yes, and staff believes that this proposed layout of the drive-through is advantageous.
Make sure we're paying attention to Mr. Harvey here. Go ahead, Mr. Harvey.
Because it is located away from the majority of the parking and would not conflict, in our opinion, with the main travel lanes, which are in this location, as well as this location for the project. Again, this is a, more of a blow-up of the drive-through lanes. One thing of interesting note is they, in this concept, have some, some parking spaces for people that may want to pick up groceries. There could be the possibility in the future where you could order your groceries, park there, and they can bring them out to your car. But, that's not specifically a drive-through component, but it's an interesting part of this overall development plan. The building design has been committed to in a conditional use permit, specifically the renderings here that you see on the screen. These renderings meet many of the neighborhood design standards with regard to recessions and projections of the building, so you don't have a single flat facade. Also, there are window treatments that appear on the facade, even though they may not be actual windows, and to break up the visual effect of the building. With regard to the conditions, they're typical, we see through, see with conditional use permits specifically, that it's for a drive-through for a pharmacy. The orientation of the drive-through is pursuant to the GDP. In this case, they're pretty certain of the development plan, so it's easily accommodated with this one use, as far as locking down the GDP. The design of canopy would be compatible with the building, and there'd be recessed lighting, limitations on, on other advertising accoutrements, such as balloons, banners, and other things, so they would not be permitted. The planning commission had a lot of discussion about the screening of this property relative to the existing neighborhood next door. There is a proffer that speaks to the screening, but they also asked that screening proffer be incorporated into the conditional use permit to specify the double row of trees would be built, so they would screen this loading area and be built concurrent with this project.
Ms. Sellers has a question.
And you may get to it, but there's two schools back, there's three schools back there, right? There's, there's two elementarys?
There's three, two elementary.
And so, are they going to, are we going to talk about delivery hours, just to kind of time it with the buses? Did anybody think about that? I mean, we don't want buses coming out at the same time and going in at the same time we have deliveries coming in and out.
I believe, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, the original proffers, original, when this was approved, well before my time, I think before maybe even Mr. Snelling's time and Kevler's time on it, called for deliveries only during the day. Is that correct?
Mr. Sterling, I don't remember specifically. I believe.
The applicant in the back of the room is nodding his head in the affirmative. He can certainly stand up and speak at the appropriate time to that matter, but I think so. And then, recent modifications have opened that up so that it wouldn't necessarily be during school hours anymore. But, we, I'd ask the applicant.
Yeah, just for the buses. When they're coming in and out, we don't want them stacking up, and it's going to create a nightmare, I could imagine.
Well, Ms. Sellers, this particular location for the, for the grocery store is located on the northeast corner of the property. The schools generally access off of Furnace Road, which is on the western edge of the property. So, likely, any activity on this site would not impact the school buses coming from the south, coming from the south up Furnace Road to Garrisonville Road. They probably wouldn't interact, except maybe on Garrisonville Road, and that would be Again, there are some additional conditions dealing with loudspeakers. That was a concern, that we minimize impacts to the neighborhood, so they would be limiting loudspeaker usage, so the neighbors won't hear people talking over the loudspeakers of the drive-through. And overall, with regard to the positives, again, it conforms to the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the commercial developments occurring in this area. We believe the conditions can mitigate the impacts. From staff perspective, we don't see any apparent negative impacts, and are recommending approval of the use permit pursuant to Resolution R15277.
Any questions for Mr. Harvey? Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Is applicant available?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Hornung. I'm Vice President of Planning and Engineering for the Silver Companies. Fern 610 is an entity that has ownership by Silver Companies personnel. Judd Honaker is actually one of the owners of that entity. We're happy to bring this to you. We do actually have a signed purchase agreement with the tenant for this, and we have proffered our GDP, so we are willing to do both of those in this case before coming to see you.
Interesting.
The, the grocery store is a byright use on this piece. It, we're here because of the pharmacy drive-through. The original proposal that we came in with was the, was a drive-through on the opposite side of the building. That was last year. We got through the planning commission, they had recommended approval of that, and because of some issues with the location of the building and the tenant's proposed orientation, what they were desiring, we basically went back to the planning commission for a redesign of the location. So, that's why this project started last fall and then is now finally getting to you today. Our goal is to start site plans immediately upon your approval, and hopefully to start construction this spring, so that this store can be open next year. Couple of things that were mentioned, I don't want to take too much of your time, you've already had a lot of public comment tonight on other, other issues, but wanted to make a couple of points. The, the drive-through on the side, it is only for the pharmacy. There is a grocery pickup on the side, and is exactly for what was described. It's a, if you order it, you drive up, you push a button, and they will bring your groceries out to you. You can pay online. It is a, it's becoming much more common these days than you think. I know that Wegmans in, over in Fredericksburg does that, and some of the Giants do it as well. If you order your groceries ahead of time, they will have them ready for you, even have coolers up front in the store, so that they keep your food cool in a section, so that when you show up, it's, it's brought out to you. The, as far as the conflict, the delivery hours were originally set when it was an office project, limiting time. The current proffers do not have a restriction on commercial deliveries. Most commercial deliveries are after hours, early mornings, and so forth. The circulation for this, you are coming in and out of primarily 610, but there is access off of Furnace Road. We've already designed with the Sheetz and with this overall project, some substantial improvements to Furnace, including adding turn lanes and widening Furnace. I believe the estimate's somewhere around $250,000 worth of improvements to Furnace, so that in the off-chance, you might have a vehicle loading or driving in during school bus hours, they'll be doing so from a protected left turn lane, so you're not, so buses can get by it in that case in the mornings. I think if you look at the number of deliveries to a grocery store throughout a day, and you spread it throughout a day, I think the chances of having conflicts are pretty limited.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
What about sidewalks? Because there's a middle school back there, and although my mother would never have let us walk that far, but.
Your ordinance requires sidewalks with commercial development alongside, so there will be sidewalks along Furnace, as well as 610. And we've also, with the Sheetz proffer, to put a crosswalk to the commercial property across the street upon the development of one more property, and this would satisfy that. So, we've already submitted to VDOT the plans for that crosswalk signal that was requested at the last meeting. One other thing on the park. The park was something that's a carryover. We did mention during the planning commission meeting that it does have the potential to become a place where people congregate, that may not, you may not necessarily want it. We're committed to building it because it was proffered, but if the county would prefer that we not build it, we are willing, if it's your request, to consider making a $25,000 contribution to your parks and rec in lieu of the park. It's up to you. We'll do it either way. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Horn. We're going to open the public hearing. You have three minutes to speak for or against the change in the proffer. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. Anyone on my right would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, anyone on my left?
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane, the Rock Hill District. You can vote in one of those schools in four weeks if you're in the Rock Hill District. What about the 18-wheelers that are coming into Sheetz, you know? They're going to hold up your buses also. And I love our ordinance, sidewalks to nowhere, this is a perfect case for that. And if you do build a park, remember Vista Woods has no HOA. That's, we don't have houses of Acquahia or houses of aristocrats. They have no HOA. They've got to beg for stormwater management. He knows what I'm talking about. It's one of the worst places for stormwater aspects. Ah, let's see. Want to remind you all that two of the planning commissioners who voted for this both live in the Rock Hill District. I still don't understand how you can have two planning commissioners from the same district voting for this aspect. I thought there's seven districts in this county. I'm very glad that he applied for a CUP, because that puts revenue in the county's bucket. Maybe we can use that to, oh, we already found $8.3 million, that's off the subject. But, my favorite is that park. You know, you build it, and they will come. You know, Kevin Costner proved it to us. The baseball team is here. If the baseball teams were out there, that'd be great. But, always remember that a gang is a team with a negative objective, and I don't want to see any type of criminal activity in those aspects. Now, let's talk about these grocery stores. Wegmans is not going to be there, let's be realistic. Bloom has already been here, and Food Lion came back. That leaves Giant, who's moved and made a fitness center. And Shoppers, we know where that was, that was in the Acquahia Town Center, and they moved. So, who's going to be this grocery store that, that's this sign tenant that's already there? I can guarantee you, I cut through Furnace Road to Chop Tank, because that's on the way to Eight Picket Lane, but I don't go there during the wintertime, because that's where we asked VDOT to fix our potholes. And by the way, I did see VDOT last week, and I asked him to fix that pothole on Picket Lane.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber like to address the board? Seeing none, I want to bring it back to the chat, to the board, and does the applicant have any rebuttal? No rebuttal, I close the public hearing. Mr. Sterling, Rock Hill District. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to nothing. And you got the second one, 277. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 19, planning and zoning, consider a partial plat vacation for Shea Estates to subdivide 40 acres, George Washington District. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Shea Estates subdivision was recorded a number of years ago. There was a plat restriction with regard to one of the lots. Saying that the lots may not, well, there's a plat restriction saying lots may not be further subdivided. There is eight lots total. Lot six was 40 acres in size. And based on its overall size, it could be potentially subdivided under our current regulations. However, that plat restriction would limit that possibility. The current owner of the property would like to have relief from that plat restriction and is requesting to possibly subdivide the parcel into two, 20 acre lots. Beyond subdividing it to that level, there are only two other options. One would be either a family subdivision or build a public street into the project, which would require off-site right-of-way in order to build a normal A1 subdivision. So based on the current configuration, there's somewhat limitation on how the property could be developed.
Wait, wait, wait. Jeff, go back to that. Right there, it says the lots may not be further subdivided. Doesn't matter how many access points, et cetera. You couldn't put in anything because you can't subdivide. You can put a house, you can put one, but there's no way to do a subdivision of any kind?
Yes, sir. That's the current restriction.
If we got rid of that specific one. Okay.
This is an aerial photograph view of the overall neighborhood. As you can see, there are a number of individual lots within the neighborhood along Wood Landing Road. Currently, there's a private access easement that was recorded to serve Lot 6, which is a big parcel. But there's also a small amount of road frontage on Bethel Church Road. That road frontage is not sufficient in order to meet the minimum lot width and road frontage requirements for a new lot. So likely they would require a new private access easement to be extended into this portion in order for it to be subdivided.
Excuse me. Currently, you could do access there? Is that, no, it's not wide enough, but you could put a road there? I was looking at a Putting Hill Road. It's private.
There is an existing private road, Putting Hill Road. According to the plat, Putting Hill Road actually loops around the entire property. But there are a number of homes along this, this section of Putting Hill Road over here.
Understand. Absent this other yellow private access, can they access this acreage through that in any way today? Given that it's got frontage on the road, I didn't quite understand what you were saying there.
You have to remove, if you remove the restriction, they're still limited by their access. They'd have to get better access.
He's asking if they can use this road because it's a private road. And without a deed.
Well, it's a private road, but it's still got that frontage. And that's the part that I guess I'm a little bit hung up on. You're saying that there's no way to run a, I'm going to call it a driveway, from Bethel Church Road onto Parcel 6, and that's a private road, so it's not, is that correct?
They could run a private driveway where they have the public road frontage onto their property.
Right. They can't, they don't have any rights to the private road. That's somebody else's, I'm assuming.
I don't recall if the, all the easement for the private road is on this property or on the adjacent properties, but that may be something that they would have to look at their title report to see whether they had access to it or not.
Understood. Thanks.
Along the same lines, I think in the package I saw, if they were to propose a subdivision back there, that staff doesn't believe there's enough road frontage for a VDOT-qualified entrance with all the bells and whistles that go with that. Is that correct?
Correct. That's why I mentioned there, we probably have to acquire off-site right-of-way. Again, this is a different view of the subdivision plat. As you know, on the plat, there's a RPA which affects the 40 acres. So there is, again, some other limitations on how that property might be further developed.
Sir, you'll have, you'll have to wait until your turn.
And with regard to the recommendation, staff notes that there is no apparent public necessity for that plat restriction as far as effects to the overall county and the government. There are no apparent implications that we could see to the other owners within the subdivision that would irreparably harm them. Specifically, the, going back to the, to the plat, again, this is the existing access for the property. Again, if they were to divide the property with a proposed new boundary line here, alternative access could be accomplished from that location.
Yes, Mr. Sterling.
You're saying the staff supports that. Now, obviously, there was a restriction put in place at the time that that would not be further subdivided. And we face different applications and things that get negotiated today to restrict development. You know, okay, we'll agree to do this part, but then you preserve that part. This looks a lot like the, that part that, you know, okay, well, assuming the board or the county at the time allowed five, what, seven units to go in over there, but they wanted this left intact as one. Why would we subsequently come back and now start dividing that? And then what prevents them from further subdividing it again, saying, well, two lots isn't enough out of that 40. We want four 10-acre lots. And now we've got four houses. You know what it's like around here in terms of anything that's getting proposed. I mean, we're effectively subdividing with no proffers or any other things if we start eliminating these plat restrictions. And I'm very, very old-fashioned, old-school. If agreements are entered into, I'm very, very reluctant to go back and undo those or let somebody out of them because then developers see it as fair game. They enter into an initial agreement, always figuring, hey, they can come in later and start modifying and modifying and modifying to add units and add units and add units. Why should we go back and essentially undo what was done before? What's in the county's interest to now expand by another developable lot?
Well, Mr. Sterling, from a staff perspective, when we looked at this, we couldn't find any specific reason as to why this configuration was set up and this restriction. So it was, for some reason, the owner, when they did the initial subdivision, they wanted to have that restriction. Our, our code in our zoning allows for this potentially to be subdivided if there was no restriction. Again, as I mentioned in the presentation, I'm not aware of any public purpose for the restriction or county government need for the restriction. But the, whether to vacate the restriction or not is...
We have Purchase a Development Rights Program, Transfer Development, all these different programs that are intentionally set up to preserve large tracts. And, well, this is, looks pretty damn rural to me. I mean, so I'm not quite sure why we're now going, granted, it's still, you know, roughly, we'll call it 20, 2 20-acre lots, but we're kind of going against what we have as stated policies and as programs in the county to preserve large open areas where we can.
Mr. Thomas?
A question along the lines of the existing property owners. I think it's pretty safe to assume if, if I was buying one of these properties and there was this big, open wooded acreage behind me, I might have my real estate agent look into what that is and what that might become someday. And I think it's pretty safe to assume that if people would have done that, they would have seen this restriction and said, oh, okay, well, that's going to be maybe one house back there somewhere. Now, you said that staff feels the, the impacts to the existing residents are minimal because the second lot could be created to the right of this vertical line. If we remove this restriction, is there anything that guarantees the subdivision would be that vertical line? Or could they subdivide it any way they, they requested to?
Mr. Thomas, the plat, removal of the plat restriction would not have any conditions associated with it? The question before the board is, do you remove the restriction or not? And that's at the board's discretion.
Mr. Sterling?
Well, it takes, so if there's no restrictions, then this is 40 acres. Our code allows three acre lots. We're talking about roughly 13 new lots could be built in here. Granted, you've got some wetlands and other things that would take from that.
Mr. Sterling, that could be a possibility if they extend public streets into the, the overall property.
Which may or may not. I mean, when you look at the, what's the value of a developable lot in Stafford today? It's 100 and, let's say, 125? That's quite a bit of money. That might give them the incentive to do so. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question.
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
There is significant wetlands in there. Could they use the, the cluster subdivision to somehow stay within the, the three acre limit but cluster the properties to one side?
Yes, that, that is a possibility based on the current zoning code.
So potentially, you could see six or eight houses over here on the right-hand side and stay out of the wet area.
Assuming they could find adequate drain fields and well sites as well as build a public street.
And there's nothing we can do today while we're removing this restriction to keep them from doing that. That's not an action we can take today as well, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Just a quick question. Didn't you say earlier that VDOT would, it would be highly unlikely if VDOT would approve this because they have no frontage?
There's not adequate frontage to build a public street into the property. Also, in this particular case here, this is easement. So that would not qualify for a public street. You have to fee simple right-of-way.
So if they don't have enough to build a public street, they couldn't build more houses?
If I could buy a piece of property to qualify?
They could acquire it. Is that what we're saying?
They would have to acquire some other off-site property in order to make a, adequate right-of-way to build a public street.
Would that have to come back to the board to make it contiguous, or?
No, sir.
Would not. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Is the applicant available for comment? Come on upstairs. State your name and address, please. That'll be fine.
My name is Alan Howard. I live at 17 Tallyhoe Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia. Originally, when my wife and I bought this property, this particular, how do we get that up on the screen? We received the plat, this plat, which is incorrect, by the way. And our attorney at the time said, well, you know, there's no further subdivision. You've got three acre lots and it doesn't look like you can do anything, you know, splitting them up any further. The owner, the previous owner said, well, you know, you have this RPA, which it would, you'd have to get the Corps of Engineers in order to build a bridge from this access that you have, which was, you know, that would not be practical. When I got into looking at the property a little closer, we find out that the RPA... No, I need, yeah, right here. If you, if you look at the map here, yeah, okay, okay. The RPA is actually shifted over to the right. So there's no access, there was no access over to this property. And there are several streams. We just had a, the, the RPA then extends quite a bit on this. It's quite a bit around here, which would, in any practical sense, limit the number of houses that could go in there in any, in any way that could be approved for any, any kind of thing. At the very most, we do have an access on, from the road on Putting Hill that was approved by the state, but it's a shared driveway access. And I'm not looking at developing this property myself. But if I were, there would be two homes in there. On the other side, the practical way of coming in that private access easement only really allows one home. And that's because of the streams that exist over there. If someone were to develop this thing into the number of lots that Mr. Sterling suggested or others had indicated, the cost to do it would be prohibitive to make any money on. It just doesn't seem practical. So, you know, we're just trying to get, the most logical thing seemed, after we found out exactly where the stream was, it divides into two 20-acre parcels. We don't think that that's asking that much. We, we found that this, that there were several things that were wrong on the plat to begin with. And this particular, there's no, nothing in any deed or anything else that we looked at that they gave us, that prevented us from further subdividing. So, you know, on the advice of our attorney, we didn't think that there would be any problem with doing this, dividing it into two lots. I don't think you're looking anywhere down the road at any substantial development of this property. It's just impractical.
Any questions? Mr. Sterling?
I, I understand what you're saying and I understand the position you're putting for, for you. I'm looking at it, and we've got to look at it from the county's standpoint. And I don't understand how it enhances or what the interests of the county are. You've basically identified that you bought this property the way this property is, with these restrictions on it. And you're asking us to take an affirmative act, which is going to enhance the value to you. But when we're trying to preserve land and we're trying to reduce development units in many cases and get them clustered in closer to the amenities and the, you know, into where we have the public services, things of that nature, I just don't know why we would say that, okay, but let's add another lot here. I mean, is there a, what value do you see it for the county?
Well, there's no, you know, I don't see any other use for the land other than, you know, I don't think one house...
We preserve land for open green space. We preserve land for open green space now.
I don't see who could, you know, the people in the subdivision can't use it because they can't cross the RPA. I mean, there's, you know, it's basically...
Green space.
Sometimes...
Somebody might be interested in buying that whole property. I mean, I...
Well, that, that didn't materialize. I, I tried that. But I did have somebody come to me and propose to buy the 20 acres for a home site. And, you know, that was, after looking at it that way, I thought, you know, that makes a lot more sense. And, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, you have your own set of thoughts on that. But I, you know, from where I come from, and having been here in Stafford for a long time, 20 acres still represents, you know, that could be agriculture. It can still be, you know, land, it can still be land use. And people aren't going to buy, you know, they're not going to build it on the whole 20 acres. You still have an awful lot of land if you have one house on there that's still wild, especially with that RPA.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak for or against, please come forward. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address. I'll start on the right-hand side of the room, work back to the left side. Yes, ma'am, you come on down.
Hi, I'm Susan Randall, and I am actually a homeowner in Shea Estates. And I have to say, we were, my neighbors and I were given this notification last Monday. And of the eight home sites or eight sites in this subdivision, five of the homeowners received this letter and got together this Sunday. I did drive by the courthouse and picked up the packet so that we could review and kind of understand the crazy letter that we received in the mail and couldn't piece together what was happening because we have never been made aware of this. When I hear that we're dividing into two 20 acres, I'm looking at the background report and it really stands out to me that while we're considering dividing into two acres, it still says could potentially be divided into 13 three, three acre lots. Would likely be less. All of that is concerning to me because it's kind of vague language. There are currently, like I said, five homeowners, and we were surprised by all of this information that just came forward. We would like a little bit more time to research the environmental and ecological impacts back there. It is wetland swamp area, and we do go back there. We walk back there. Additionally, I would like for more consideration to be given to the fact that when we bought this land, and I just bought two and a half years ago, even though I lived at my prior home 17 years, when we did buy this, we were not told that there was an HOA. We were, we asked, we were told there was none, only to find out, when you talk to your neighbors, that you actually do have an HOA. And in the HOA that your applicant has put together, he actually put this together, he has a plan for the 40 acres and it included a house, a fruit orchard, and pasture for horses. So that was in the covenants that he put together and that I just received. Additionally, I just find that we did not, as homeowners, choose to have this property... property behind us developed. We paid well for our, our three acre and some parcels, and knowing that the parcel piece behind us was also going to have one home, uh, as ours would. And that's what we paid for. And I kind of feel like we're being a little bit defrauded a little bit with not being given information other than one week prior to this circumstance. So the majority of the homeowners are against this, and we hope the majority of you all are as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come in. Ma'am, you can get right in behind him if you'd like. State your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. My name's Lee D. Wilson. I live at 228 Wood Landing Road. I agree with your comments. There's no reason to do this. Um, when I bought this land and I paid 600,000 for my home, which was a lot back then, I was told that there would be nothing behind me. I couldn't subdivide. That drove up the cost, and I was willing to pay for that. There are two things that make land valuable in Wood Landing Road. The conservation, as you'll see on that plot behind us, and waterfront land down at the bottom. Well, I'm at the conservation land, I'm not the waterfront. Oh, well. As a result, I'd be losing value if all of a sudden my land could be subdivided or land was then subdivided. And then there are other issues, too. What about fair practice? You're going to rezone the land, or you're going to rezone the conservation land, then let someone subdivide and buy it at the same time without, um, fair bidding and competition on that? Because right now the land's unusable because of what was stated. But now we're going to allow it to be subdivided, and the same person subdivides and gets it? Then what about the ecological studies? I'm not a hunter. I enjoy the deer and the little critters that come in the back, and I throw out food and stuff and watch the birds and eagles come down. There will be a significant impact on them as well. Also, I'm not clear if this land is watershed protected. That's another issue. And I agree with the councilman there when he says that Stafford was designed to not have clutter. That's why I moved out of, um, Stafford Lakes. So I could have, you know, my three acres and, and have my little 4,200 square foot home and my pool. But I understand how promises work, you know, because there were promises made such as, uh, 40 acres and a mule. But I'm not complaining because I've got a Honda and it's got 300 horses in it, and I have a 4,200 square foot on three acres, so I'm doing pretty good. So I'm not upset about that promise. But what it comes down to is, we do feel like we're being defrauded. I get it. You got land, you want money, so, hey, you're trying to sell it. But when it's a conservation, who wouldn't buy Yellowstone Park and develop it and sell houses on? I would if they'd let me. Do the same thing with the mall down there in, in DC. So the point here is, yes, we can see the, the economic gain here, but the issue is, is that it does impact us negatively on our values. Because without that conservation or waterfront, a house my size at the time, and you can check it on appraisals, would have only went for 400,000. So that's a 200,000 bump up because of these restrictions that make my land exclusive and more valuable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd advise you not to feed those deer. They care of Lyme disease.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Mary Scott, and I'd like to thank you for not allowing the 40 acre lot to be subdivided in the past.
Ms. Scott, could you state your address, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I live on 737 Bethel Church Road and Pudding Hill Road. That private road is my driveway. So, half of it. The other half belongs to Mr. Howard. So, um, I've lived peacefully on my property with no visible homes or neighbors in sight. I've lived there for 28 years, and if there's any building within this area, it will affect the wildlife that calls that area home, and also me, my family, my neighbors and friends. I'm sorry, I'm nervous, but this is like really upsetting.
Don't, don't be nervous. There's only a couple million people watching tonight on television.
Okay. All right. Now I'm relaxed. Okay. As stated on one of the attachments, there is future planning to expand the subdividing on the 20 acres adjacent to my property. An easement would be needed to properly build access to these 20 acres. Being it would partially be on my property, I will not now nor in the future grant an easement or any permission. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to voice my opinion. And I ask that you continue to deny any future subdividing.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak for or against? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time today to hear us on this, uh, this issue. My name is Craig Pearl. I live at 192 Wood Landing Road. Uh, my wife and I purchased the property in 2005. We were the first residents of Shea Estates. And, uh, as in all of our neighbors and, uh, and, uh, folks that share that, uh, ownership of those properties in Shea Estates, the main reason we purchased the home was it was zoned A1. And so, we took a long, hard look at that, and I think there's been a lot of folks in here that have shared the, the actual color of it, what we enjoy and how we enjoy it. And we've all, you know, purchased homes that I think provide a substantial tax base for the, uh, for the county of Stafford. Uh, beyond that, I think we have to take a hard look. I mean, it's not just a, uh, an issue of somebody trying to subdivide, being able to sell a property and, and, uh, change something around and make an issue around that. We've got major issues that I would like to request somebody from the supervisory board here to come down and walk this property with a representative of the EPA or somebody that handles that sort of scenario within the, uh, within the county of Stafford. Uh, there is a significant watershed through there. It's a spring-fed creek that has now been much more immensely grow, uh, grown since the original time we purchased the property into a fairly major swamp area, which has brought in an immense amount of wildlife, eagles, beavers, and, uh, everything you can imagine back there. So it's not simply what it was, what the original plat may show. And that's this little stream going through there and what the applicant indicated. So I think that the wetlands would restrict the, uh, the request to develop the property further. And what's, what, uh, I, I found to be disturbing from the initial point of this is, I'm hearing, uh, the applicant describe the vision of the property, and I've heard that now for 11 years. One house here, you know, there are wetlands. He, he drew on that, and that's perfectly fine. But then we see something that actually does, for the future development of this, who he will sell it to will have the ability to, to purchase and, and develop 13 other subdivision and, and lots. I have no idea how that can possibly be done with the wetlands and the structure of the land back there. So I think it'd be very, very important. And I think somebody just came up, Mr. Sterling, to get the HOA that was written by Mr., uh, Mr. Alan Howard. If you notice in there, the, the requirements of future home development are that 2,400 one level, 2,400 square feet, one-level properties, or 3,200 square feet, two-level properties. So I don't know how this property, this type of, uh, of land and, and, and what is on this land could support the perk requirements to have 13 subdivided lots that would be potentially, uh, available to the next purchaser of this property if this decision is made in favor of the applicant. So those are things that I think need to be looked at. I don't think they've been brought up, and they certainly haven't been in the documents that you guys have been provided so far. So the HOA is available and, and has that there. So, and the other is, I think one other, uh, of my neighbors requested it. I think at this point, I was traveling for two weeks. I just received this. I have had very little time to, to research it and speak very intelligently on it at all. So what I would like is a stay put on this at the very least before any decision is made.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Anyone else in the room would like to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Please come on up.
Mike Swick, 1705 Rogers Street, uh, represent Mr. Alan and, uh, and his wife and his, uh, real estate broker. Uh, I think there's been a lot of misinformation as far as what's going on here. This is a simple 10 acre lot split. Uh, as far as the wetland study, the wetland study has been turned into you guys. The conservation easement was hurriedly done in the original plat and done wrong by someone else other than Mr. Howard. We're just trying to straighten the mess out. All we want to do is two 10 acre lots, if you'd like it in the provisions that it stayed, or 20 acre lots, I'm sorry. If you would like it to say 20 acre lots, not, not further developed, that's fine. All we're trying to do is split this thing where it should naturally be split, which is along the creek. And it came out to be two perfect 20 acre lots. And there are, one side has the potential for possibly four home sites. Like I said, that's not an issue anymore. He just wants to sell two 20 acre lots and be done with it. And if it would make a difference to say that they can never be developed smaller than 20 acre lots, I'm sure he would go along with that. And that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Anyone else in the room like to speak for or against? Would the applicant like to rebuttal anything? Please come forward, sir.
I think I can understand the, um, I know Mr. Pearl very well, and I know some of the other people, but I don't know them quite as well. Um, I think maybe what's happened here is they don't really have all the information. Uh, there was certainly no intention on our port to defraud anyone. The, um, this map that this other woman had, had nothing to do with the covenants and restrictions. I don't know where that came from, but it didn't belong in that, didn't belong in that. Well, I don't know which, which one you have. Okay, right. But that, uh, we, I think we handed that out back when, but it's not in the covenants and restrictions. It hasn't been filed with the covenants and restrictions. But as Mr. Pearl stated, you know, these, uh, you could not put more than one or two houses back there. I mean, this, I'm not going to argue, you know, but the house that would, would go back there at this point would be right on that, is already accessed there. That's, that's by right. Um, you know, that's, that's not an issue because that's on that side. But, excuse me.
Well, you're telling us what your intentions would be, and your representative told us what your intentions, hey, you'd be happy with, just look, two 20 acre, and that'd be fine.
Right.
Except your predecessor owner of this, I guess it was your predecessor owner of it, agreed to one 40 acre, not further subdividable.
But they-
That's the way this is. It, this is, that's in there, and somehow that got agreed to. You'd say, "Well, let's just break this into two."
No, I, I spoke to the former owner of the thing. He said, he said that, that what happened was, they didn't, you know, they misplaced, first of all, they misplaced the RPA on it.
Set the RPA aside. That the, the language clearly states it wouldn't be further subdivitable on that 40 acre. You're saying two 20 acres, and you're saying we could put in restrictions saying, "And don't further subdivide." But then whoever you sell to could come back in and say, "You know, we really didn't want that. Can you further subdivide it further?" And that's part of the-
You know, we've, we've had to, we've had to straighten out a mess here. I mean, that's part of it. Because, I mean, we didn't have any, any idea that this thing wasn't where we said it was. And we spent a lot of money on the RPA business. It's not our intention to build on that, any of that land. But what, what's happened here is now we have, we spend in, and we have a total environmental survey by, by the way, on all the streams. It was a, a perennial stream flow survey, which has cost us a lot of money. We've spent an awful lot of money on looking at this thing and trying to get it split up into these two things. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, why the people on that side would have any concern at all, because there already could be one house back there. That's, and that's the only one that I would ever see, foresee being there. But, uh, the other side, for that matter, you know, has a, a, just a shared access easement. Uh, and that was given us to us by the state of Virginia. And that, that's already been passed through. Um, I think maybe it's appropriate to meet, uh, for us to, uh, delay this and meet with these people and explain it. Uh, they don't seem to be very well informed on it. But that would also, you know, be, that wouldn't, wouldn't make any difference if you, you know, if there was no, uh, there was, there was no opportunity to get it subdivided anyway. But there was no other place, no other place in the deed or anywhere else do we find that, that, uh, that they couldn't be subdivided. And our attorney, on his advice, and we thought when you're talking about the three acre lots, um, you know, that other land was undeveloped as it is. So, um, that's my story. That's my situation.
Ms. Sellers has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Ms. Bonkey, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right? Okay, the question I have, um, and I, I haven't seen the document that circu- circulating down there is, what did the homeowners agree to when they settled on their property? That's what I want to know. I don't, I don't care about where the stream was. I'm not interested in all the environmentals that were done. I would like to know what the people that bought the property there, what did they agree to, and what was told to them when they purchased that property? Because they made their decisions based on the information that was provided.
I can't say what anyone else said. But we had a very, we have a, they are supposed to receive their covenants and restrictions. And as Mr. Pearl stated, the covenants restrictions say what size house has to be built. And, you know, we wanted to have an upscale subdivision. And now that would mean that anywhere that you built that house, we had to have four bedroom perks on those, on those house sites.
Did it indicate in the language that the lots could not be subdivided?
Nowhere. And I don't find in the, in the deed or anywhere else except on that plat. And the plat is wrong. I mean, the plat was wrong to begin with. It shows things that aren't on there, and it-
Can you help me understand why we didn't go back and get the plat fixed a long time ago?
Because it wasn't, you know, there wasn't any, we didn't know what, where this thing was. I mean, it's a, you know, there's a lot of land, a lot of trees back there. I mean, you could walk back there and say, "Oh, okay." It's, um, it's very wild land, as they've stated. It's very wild. Uh, there's a stream, there's all kinds of little streams and nooks and crannies, and now we have beavers back there. But all of that just means that the further the RPA has been expanded. It doesn't, you know, it, it doesn't affect these neighbors in any way.
Is there information in our board documents, Mr. Harvey, that talks about the expansion of the RPA? I didn't see anything in here.
Do you have that in environmentals, uh, or the new plat?
The bump is, was referenced. We would do a, um, RPA delineation as part of the review of the subdivision plat. That is, that has been conducted. So, um, the submitted plat for the future subdivision as proposed would reflect the actual RPA.
Okay.
Ms. Sellers.
Are you, are you finished, Ms.? Okay. Um, my question for you is, and leading into this, any time we sit down with homeowners, at least us, or property owners, and they want to do something with their property, I think all of us would recognize that you have the right to do things with your property. But my question to you is, did you ever sit down with your neighbors and say, "Hey, this is what I want," particularly the lady over here that you share a road with, she's gone now, but did you ever sit down with her? And, and I would say this to any developer, you, you can ask Mr. Pence. Um, you know, I, I find it really hard to sit up here and you bring to the board, "I want to do this," and it's contingent on a shared road that you share with this property owner, and you never talk to her. You know, did you talk to these, your neighbors and, and say, "This is what I want to do," so that you don't come in here and we go through this?
I did not. No, I spoke to some of them, but I didn't speak to all of them. And I can see now that that was a mistake.
Well, particularly that lady, who you share a road with.
Well, you know, that, what, but it doesn't, you know, the Pudding Hill Road does not share where that access easement is. And I had no intention of, you know, infringing on her. The, the state gave us an access easement on that frontage, on that road frontage.
Right.
So, I mean, there was no, there was no reason to go on her road or on her. But we had talked, you know, her, her husband, Bob Scott, and I talked a lot. In fact, he did some plans for me. He did so, you know, he's a, he's a drawer, a, a mechanical drawer. So he, I mean, he converted a set of plans for me. So we were very close on it. And I've spoken to Jones about it. They didn't have any particular issue with my being over there, or even, you know, their, their driveway is not very, in very good condition. And I know other people who are on, like a lane. I mean, if we were to share that with them, I think everybody would be better off. We would have more, uh, money to maintain that.
If I may add, the, the Pudding Hill-
Could you step to the microphone, please, because you've got-
Pudding Hill Road property, uh, is maybe a shared easement. There is 80 feet fee simple ownership coming off of Route 600 there. So there's no need for a shared driver. He has that. And the way it was designed, if we could go back to the, the map here, the private access easement, when this was done, a private access easement was to serve two or more lots. Uh, so it showed the potential for possible future development just by intent. But what's actually going on here is, is basically two houses.
Computer, please.
The work's been done. There's really no effect on the Pudding Hill Road because it has its own fee simple road frontage that was approved by the state. So there would not be a shared driveway. And if, like I said, if it makes everybody happy, or happier, I mean, it is his property, and two houses is much better if he can put that in a form of a covenant that says there'll be one house on each side, and that's it, and we can put this all to bed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Bring it back to the board. I'm sorry, sir, the public comment is over. I close the public hearing. Mr. Thomas, your district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand a couple of residents may feel like they don't completely understand this, but it is my job to do that. And before me, I see a legally valid and binding plat restriction, which was present when the applicant purchased the property. I feel for the applicant, and maybe that he had some bad legal advice. But finding no compelling reason in the public's best interest, I would ask the board to allow me to move Resolution R 15-260, which is a denial of the partial plat vacation.
I have a motion and a second. End of discussion. Hearing on cashew votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero for denial. Item number 20, Public Works, grant permanent access to a public right-of-way on Bonnie Lee Court, Griffiths Widewater. Mr. Hubbell.
Give that back to Bob. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Steve Hubbell, Assistant Director of Public Works, here tonight to address item number 20, which concerns access on to Bonnie Lee Court. Essentially, we've received a request from the owner of parcel 20-58 to subdivide that parcel, which in its existence currently is approximately 22 acres. They're proposing subdivision of one lot of three acres that currently has an existing home and would front on Ebenezer Church, and to create a second half that's approximately 19 acres. I'll show a drawing in a second that'll help make this a little more clear. The existing home would have direct access to Ebenezer Church, but the remaining parcel would only have access to Bonnie Lee Court. The subdivision ordinance requires that lots front on an existing state-maintained street or a street that is privately owned and/or maintained by an HOA. Bonnie Lee Court abuts parcel 20-58 along the west side of the right-of-way. So this parcel here is the entire property, and they're proposing to have a three-acre parcel in the front, which would have access on Ebenezer Church here, and then create a 19-acre parcel in the rear that does not currently have access. Bonnie Lee Court is, abuts both properties to the west. And Bonnie Lee Court is part of the existing Serena Forest subdivision, which was an eight-lot subdivision, the plat for which is shown here. That plat was recorded approximately 1988. The significance of that is that when the, when that plat was recorded and that subdivision was developed, it was not adequately completed to VDOT standards, therefore is not currently in the state system. Therefore, the county is the operator of the underlying right-of-way in absence of VDOT being, in absence of it not being accepted into the VDOT right-of-way. So consequently, that street could not be accepted, and the estimate to bring it up to standard is approximately $150,000. So what's being requested is that the board grant access to the new parcel, the 19-acre parcel, across the county public right-of-way, which requires a public hearing in accordance with the Virginia Code section listed above. The owners of parcel 2058 wish to have access to Bonnie Lee Court and future subdivision rights to the remainder parcel without the requirement to post a bond or other security instrument, essentially not to have to upgrade the roadway in order to get their access. The board has several options available that are included but not limiting to. The first would be to deny access to Bonnie Lee Court, and that would require the remainder parcel to access Ebenezer Church Road. Another option would be to approve access to Bonnie Lee Court for the remainder parcel without conditions. And another option would be to approve access to Bonnie Lee Court with conditions. Such conditions could be a requirement to post a bond or other security in an amount to complete construction of Bonnie Lee Court to current VDOT standards, therefore getting it into the public system and creating a public road. Another option would be to restrict the remainder of the 19-acre parcel from any future subdivision. What the resolution that's in your package has proposed is that, if approved, it would allow access to Bonnie Lee Court, but had conditions that require that securities be put in place to have Bonnie Lee Court be on a path towards public acceptance into the VDOT system. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Milde.
I'm just curious, one of your options was that somehow we allow access but limit further subdivision. Is the owner okay with that idea?
I believe, based on the correspondence that we receive from them, they're not particularly receptive to that idea. I'd certainly allow them to speak to that, but that's my understanding.
Any other questions? Mr. Cavalier?
Yes, Steve, so the owners want access to the road, but they don't want to pay for the improvements to the Bonnie Lee Court to get it up to state standards? Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding of what their request has been up to this point. And essentially, the resolution before you has, in, I guess in my terms, would propose a compromise where they would be given access, but they would be required to bring that road up to, up to code and then get it accepted into the system. As you see in front of you, the board has several options in which, in which you all could proceed, but we've laid out the resolution in that manner.
But I thought you said the applicant, the owners of the other subdivision, didn't want to pay money to have the road improved?
We would be asking the proposed subdivider of the new subdivision to make those improvements, not, this would have no effect on anyone within the existing subdivision.
So no one on Bonnie Lee Court would have to pay anything?
Assuming the board would approve the resolution as it's structured currently, that's correct. That obligation would be placed on the subdivider of the adjacent parcel.
Okay. Any other questions?
What's that zone?
I'm sorry?
Zone back there. How many houses could they get back there if they subdivide?
It's zoned, I would probably ask Jeff for his expertise, but off the top of my head, it's zoned A1, three-acre lots, 19 acres, so a possibility of six. It's unlikely you'd get that many. You'd have to build a state road.
Exactly.
There's RPA, so probably not that many.
Which would be, which would pale on the cost of building that road, would be way more than fixing up that existing road that's just basically, we've seen this happen all over the place. I have a situation like this in my district.
Any other, you have any other questions, Mr. Milde?
Yeah. No, I know, I'm trying to start asking questions about the residents that are already on that. I'm not going to go down that, never mind.
Any other questions? Saying, thank you, Mr. Hubbell. Is the applicant here? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
We're co-owners. Should we go up once at a time?
Absolutely, come on up.
Evening. Paul Janney, 1309 Franklin Street in Fredericksburg.
Good evening. Paul Ira Kane, Fredericksburg, Virginia.
Well, just to tell you, I think it is A1, three-acre lots, but with the frontage, if you could pull the map back up from Bonnie Lee Court, we'd only have a 50-foot access, which would allow only a private driveway, not a state-maintained road. So we wouldn't be able to develop the property further than one or two lots.
Computer, please.
That begs that question I asked, are you willing to, are you willing to limit the subdivision to one or two?
We are willing to limit it to two, because off a private driveway from the state, the county standards, you can have two home sites off one private driveway.
And then I assume that the cost, $155,000, makes the cost completely unfeasible. Right.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. We're open the public hearing. I ask you to state your name and address. I do have one speaker card. This gentleman's been very patient tonight, Mr. Don Maxner.
Yes, sir. Don Maxner, 18 Bonnie Lee Court. Purchased my home, 2001. Wonderful cul-de-sac, no traffic. I don't want people back there. We've got enough. Smith Lake opened up behind me. The traffic's been quite elevated since that has been occupied. There's no reason for it. And you open up onto Anvil Road, which is really busy anyway with all the Marine Corps and FBI traffic. We don't need any more houses.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chamber like to address this for or against? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Patsy Emmons. I live at four Bonnie Lee Court. And it's kind of cold in here after the congregation left. But from my understanding, when I moved there, there was developer, the person that developed that community was supposed to finish the road, and he left and, you know, ran out of money and just left town. So we're stuck with like, almost like a gravel road. And I don't really mind them building a couple houses, but I would like, if they're going to use that road, I would like for it to be finished and, and, you know, you know, to where it's state VDOT standard, or whatever it's called. But, because they're going to have heavy traffic going, they're going to have heavy machinery going back there, heavy trucks, constructions trucks, and it's just going to tear up the road more. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am. Does the applicant have any rebuttal at all?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a comment about the feasibility of developing it. If we don't develop just two lots, two homes back there, both on 10 acres, plenty of open space, backs up to Acquah Creek, like a park, beautiful. This isn't going to matter in the future anyway. It's unfeasible for us to spend $155,000 to repave a road. It just doesn't make any sense to do that. So we're only asking for two lots. But this road is going to, whether two homes are on there or not, is not going to get any better or worse by another two homes being on that, on that road. The road's in fair condition, it's not the best road, it's not the worst road in this county. So I'm asking for permission to go ahead and get the right-of-way without having to post the bond for the road.
Okay, thank you, sir. Bring it back to the board and close the public hearing. I'm Mr. Cavalier, Griffiths Widewater District.
Well, I'm accustomed to an applicant or a developer coming to me with the information prior to a public hearing here. And I don't recollect that there being any attempts to contact me on this matter. So I'm totally unaware of what your plans are. I also like to involve the residents who live along that road in their decision-making process, because they're first and foremost in this matter. So that being said, I would like to defer this matter to see what kind of plan you can come up with that will hopefully-
One second.
Make everybody happy, and then, when it's ready, then we'll come back to the board.
Discussion, though.
I have a motion for deferral and a second by Mr. Milde. End of discussion.
Yes, please.
Mr. Milde.
Will you pull the map back up that shows the parcels?
I don't want that map out.
Oh, come on now, we're almost finished. Not that one. The one that shows the overhead from an airplane. Keep going. Trees. The one I've got on my screen here, do you have this one?
I think you're talking about-
Okay. We've got one in our board package that's different.
Background report.
I want you people to see this, because I've done a little bit of, I own a little bit of land here and there. That's not it. You're serious they don't have that picture?
We don't have it on, Paul.
Well, that's, is it?
Attachment two of the-
Well, I've got the picture. I want everyone else to see the picture. It's unfortunate that we don't have that picture. You're going to find it real quickly for me? Because when you look further out a little bit here, Mr. Snell, you're going to, are you looking, am I waiting for you, or are we doing something? All right. What you're going to see is three big parcels of land. Looks like one's about 12 acres, next to one that's 16, we know, and another one that's probably 10 or 12. And I promise you, knowing Stafford County and developers, that it's just a matter of time. The option of not having any houses there is not likely, unless you buy it and decide not to build on it. There's a, I just want, it's a really, not necessarily a bad deal to limit, to have someone that's willing to limit the construction to just two homes on that. Because I believe that one day a developer will come in, buy the access agreement, and they're going to access all that land and subdivide it into smaller, smaller lots. So I just want that, that's what we see all over Stafford County, is, you know, people will find the land, they'll put it together. It's called parceling together. There's no ordinance that keeps people from abandoning lot lines, and then they will, they will make a subdivision. So it might be, it might be some serious merit when you get together with supervisor Cavalier and delimiting that, that development. Thank you.
Any other comments before we cast the vote? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. This is for deferral. Tally the votes. The motion for deferral passes seven to zero. That's all of our agenda tonight. Mr. Chairman? Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we have the resolution.
14A, sir.
Yes.
In your add-on folder, just asking FAMPO to support full funding of the Anvil Road intersection improvement. Staff recommends approval.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second end of discussion. Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. Our next meeting is October the 20th at 3:00 PM.